That makes sense.
You got these in?
I'm sure I can get it.
Sure.
I'm sure we can, if I don't, I mean.
Terry, you're in the room.
Yep.
She's getting it.
I have it.
You got it?
I do.
Count it, Terry. Okay, we'll wait. Ready? Okay, please do you mention the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you, and then we need to adopt the agenda. I have just two little suggestions. Anybody else have?
One is to close in memory of Millie Kofick.
Absolutely.
I was gonna say the same thing if you have. Probably one of them.
And then, under Mayor Council matters, I wanted to just information on the city selection committee, which has been distributed. May I have a motion for approval of modified agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, then first we have the report from the city attorney on the closed session.
There were two closed sessions this evening. Conference with legal counsel regarding two cases of potential litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9. In one matter, direction was given. In the other matter, no direction was given, and there was no reportable action from the closed session.
Okay, thank you. So we have two presentations for this evening. And first is from, now I'm not sure how to pronounce his name. Is it Yekel?
It's Yekel.
Yekel, Yekel, okay. I was looking at that. I don't have any idea how to pronounce that. Mr. Doug Yekel, who is the Public Information Officer for San Francisco Airport, and is going to tell us about some runway closures and the consequences thereof, right?
Yes.
Please.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council. My goal here is to provide a brief overview on some runway construction that we'll be conducting. We've been conducting runway construction at SFO for about five years now, and the final phase of this project will involve the closure of two of our runways for a period of about four and a half months next summer. So I wanted to provide an overview on the project in total and how it pertains to the closures for next summer. So I'll begin with the slides here. Thank you. And just to provide a brief overview, our runway layout at SFO is comprised of four total runways, and these are made up of two sets of parallel runways that intersect one another. So this just provides us a little orientation. You can see Highway 101 in orange on the left side of the image. And we number these runways according to a compass heading. Runways 28 left and right are traditionally used for landing at SFO, and we've already completed work on these two runways. But really what we're going to talk about tonight is the work on runways one left and one right. These are primarily used for departing traffic, and this is the type of configuration that we operate at, at SFO, about eighty-five percent of the time. There's a brief period where weather conditions require an alternate arrangement, but this is normally how we operate. So we're going to talk a little bit about a runway safety area. This is a safety zone surrounding each runway. It's designed to prevent aircraft from overshooting or undershooting a runway. As I mentioned, we've completed the runway safety areas on Runways 28 left and 28 right, and these feature extended thresholds on either end of the runways. On the runways that we're going to work on next summer, we'll be installing what's called an EMAS, or an Engineered Material Arresting System. This is a system that's designed to bring an aircraft safely to a stop. And this picture in the slide shows an EMAS system in actual use. This is in West Virginia, that an aircraft, a US Air aircraft, actually had an aborted takeoff and ran out of sufficient runway space, but this runway was equipped with this EMAS. And as you can see, it's a modular system. It's made up of a grid of collapsible brick areas that are designed to essentially capture an aircraft's landing gear and bring it safely to a stop. So in this case, the EMAS system performed as designed, and we're actually going to be installing these types of systems at either end of runways, one left and one right. And this is the work that we're going to be conducting next summer.
So what does it increase? Obviously, it can stop in a shorter distance than would have been the case if it was just over your runway.
That's correct.
Is there any kind of proportionate information on what its effectiveness is?
So essentially, this stemmed from a series of incidents that occurred in other parts of the country in which aircraft, in most cases during inclement weather, did not have sufficient runway space to come to a stop. And the FAA has provided guidance on a few different measures that are available. They can either increase the raw distance of the safety threshold. We've always had safety thresholds at SFO. For example, the runway 28 left and right work that was done previously, they had a three-hundred-foot threshold. Those thresholds have now increased to distances of six hundred to a thousand feet. So this objective can be accomplished through raw distance by simply increasing the amount of threshold that's available at the end of either runway. Or, in the case of these shorter runways, one left and one right, rather than making it up through raw distance, we can accomplish the same objective by installing this EMAS technology. So we will have these EMAS systems in place on our two shorter runways. On our longer runways, we're making it up through raw distance.
Does it increase the stoppage twenty percent, thirty percent, or you got any?
I don't know that the FAA has published a percentage rate in terms of performance. Essentially, what they've identified is that runways around the US should have larger, in most cases doubled or more, thresholds at the end of their runways. And that's the objective. So the FAA requires all airports around the US, major airports, to complete the installation of runway safety areas by 2015. This applies to more than forty airports around the US, including SFO. This is a federally funded project to install these. And as I mentioned, we've already completed our upgrades on Runways 28 left and 28 right. This final phase is what takes us to the summer of 2014, and that involves the closure of our two departure runways, one left and one right. We looked at a few different options. We've been meeting with the airlines and with the FAA over the course of the past two years to evaluate a variety of different phases and different options to complete this work. Some of the phasing options included closing one end of the runways and leaving the other open, the other end open for airlines to use. This would have significantly shortened the available runway. It would have restricted the types of aircraft that could use it. These options wound up not being very feasible, and they carried with them some safety concerns that made them not very palatable. In particular, the concept of having a shortened runway with aircraft taking off over an active construction site, and the fact that only a certain percentage of aircraft could actually use those shortened runways. The rest would get diverted to the other runways. The option that we selected was the decision to close both runways completely for a period of four and a half months, and have essentially all of our arriving and departing traffic operating on Runways 28 left and 28 right. An additional benefit of this option, along with the fact that it gets the work done in the shortest amount of time, is that this utilizes air traffic control procedures that our controllers are familiar with already. We already have operated under a condition in which we're only using 28 left and 28 right for all of our operations. We're going to be planning this construction from a period of May 17th of next year through September. So again, that's about a four and a half month period. This construction is going to occur around the clock, 24/7. And part of the reason we're doing it during the timeframe that we are is because a lot of it involves paving work, we need periods where we have dry weather. So although we do get June gloom, and we get fog and low clouds, we get very little precipitation during the months of May through September of next year, and that's really one of the big drivers in the timing of this project. We've also factored in all of the air traffic control and safety considerations. So we believe this is the best option because it gets the work done in the shortest amount of time possible. In terms of delay impact, I just want to talk a little bit on what we might expect during this period in terms of delays at SFO. Right now, operating with all four of our runways available to us, there are peak periods throughout the day, periods of peak demand, in which we need to be able to land about fifty-two to fifty-four aircraft an hour. That's not a requirement all day long, but during the peak periods, we need to bring in that rate. During this closure, that rate will be cut down to about forty-five to forty-six arrivals per hour. So you can see, there's a difference of about seven or eight flights during peak periods. I've listed those peak demand periods, and we are working with airlines to adjust their schedules. We've asked the airlines to take a look at their summer schedule and essentially de-peak their schedule where feasible in order to address the shortfall. Obviously, we don't have oversight on airline scheduling. This is merely a request that we're making.
Is that a new concept you've just created?
What's that?
De-peak?
Hey, I'm an old airline guy, and we've used that term quite a bit. The other thing that we may expect is because we're using the same runways for both arrivals and departures, we may see some increases in taxi times. In other words, departing aircraft are going to have to taxi way to the end of the Runways 28 left and 28 right. Sometimes that creates taxi congestion, and we do occasionally see some fifteen-minute gate holds on departing aircraft for that. So these are some of the potential operational impacts that we might, may see as a result of this. During the period of this runway closure, the FAA is going to assume temporary oversight of flight schedules at SFO. This essentially means that this fall, airlines are starting to work on their summer schedule for next year, and they will submit all of their planned schedules to the FAA for review. If the FAA looks at the schedule and sees that there is a peak period where demand potentially exceeds our supply, they have the ability to go back to an airline to say, you know, "We need you to make some adjustments here to fit into this temporary restriction." And again, as I've mentioned, we've been consulting with the airlines and the FAA on this construction project. I do want to talk a little bit on the effect on flight patterns, as this is particularly pertinent for some of the communities surrounding SFO, and talk about a little bit of some of the changes. So here's a map of our area. You can see the airport in the lower right. Again, you can see the two parallel sets of intersecting runways. And this is an all-inclusive, but I want to plot out for you some of the departure patterns that we currently see from Runways one left and one right. So today, we see typically flights that leave for the Midwest, the East Coast or Europe. They depart off one left and one right, and they head in this direction along the bay. We also see traffic going to Southern California make this turn over Brisbane and head south. So these are some of the most, this is not all of the departure patterns, but this is some of the most frequent patterns that we see. Now, what's going to happen next summer, when these two runways are closed, all of these patterns will essentially go away. And we'll go to a 28-only departure configuration, where we'll see aircraft going to Asia and Hawaii, going off in this direction, and we'll see aircraft going to the Midwest, East Coast, and Europe, conducting this turn over Highway 101 and working their way east. So this is essentially the type of configuration that we'll be seeing next summer from mid-May until approximately the end of September while this runway construction is being accomplished. The other thing that I'd like to talk about a little bit is how often we go to 28-only departures. I mentioned that this is a procedure that our air traffic controllers are already familiar with. Even today, when we encounter real high winds blowing through the gap, the winds will be sufficient enough to require that all arriving and departing traffic utilize the 28 left and right runways exclusively. This is a little bit of a graph that shows you this year how many days each month we utilized a pure 28 configuration. So you can see in the months of May and June, eighteen out of the thirty or thirty-one days in those months, we were already operating on this type of configuration. Not necessarily twenty-four hours a day, but for some portion of that day, we were already using that type of configuration. And then you can see for September as well, about a third of the month, we were using that procedure. Want to talk a little bit about evening operations? We're back to this grid of departure patterns. And taking a look at the section in red, you'll see that we have Asia and Hawaii, and the Asian flights, I would say, have always used this pattern because they typically use larger aircraft. They need a longer runway. Flights to Asia typically use this pattern all the time. What's different is the routing of the Southern California flights. And those flights typically wrap up around 9:00 PM every night. Airlines like to traditionally get into Southern California before that time. Some of the airports, like Orange County, have curfews. So typically, it's an operation that wraps up a little earlier. By the time we hit ten o'clock at night, traditionally, the most departures that we have are what we call red-eye flights. These are transcontinental flights, or flights going to the Midwest. So flights after 10:00 PM, you're going to see them routed in the green patterns here, kind of going off onto the bay. And then after 2:00 AM, we've only got a handful of flights which actually reverse their course and take off towards the San Mateo Bridge. We call that a quiet bridge departure. So those are just a snapshot of some of the evening operations that we would see. The overall goals of this project, number one, we need to comply with the federal regulations. We want to continue our culture of safety. We're unique in that we have a very limited footprint. Other airports might have had the ability to really significantly expand the space around their airport. We're kind of, you know, locked on one side by the bay and the other by Highway 101, so we kind of need to find solutions within our existing footprint. And we feel that we've done that to be compliant with these standards. We plan to publicly announce the runway closures for 2014 next week, but we wanted an opportunity to reach out to you first and provide a little bit of a briefing. When we do announce it, we're going to have special sections on our website. We'll be putting out a press release, and we'll also be putting out a public service announcement to kind of educate the public about this project and what we're trying to do. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, appreciate the presentation, and I'll ask my colleagues if they have some questions.
I have some. So Doug, effectively, in 2014, we shouldn't be having any noise in Brisbane, is that correct? If it's a 28 left and right departure?
Well, I would say that one of the-
At least looking by your map, there's no flyovers here, right?
I would say that one of the major routings over Brisbane, which is that departure off of Runways one left and one right, turning left to go to Southern California. That type of routing during the summer of next year will not be in operation. There will be an increase in traffic on some of those other routings, but yes, the primary pattern over Brisbane will be eliminated during the summer of next year.
Right, okay. Just curious on some of the technical stuff of this matting. So it's kind of like a mechanical fuse? Is that what it is?
It's actually, it's a cellular material. And you saw that aircraft that went into it. Essentially, the interior of it is filled with almost a sand-like material. So it's strong enough, each block, and we're going to order hundreds of these blocks to install on either end of those runways. The blocks are strong enough to withstand something as heavy as an airport fire truck. So vehicles can actually go onto that, but an aircraft is sufficiently heavy to cause it to collapse as designed. And the idea is that, almost like a runaway truck ramp, that the landing gear gets embedded into the sand, and it quickly and safely brings the aircraft to a stop.
So is it actually sand, or does it have some kind of fire retardant in it?
It's a sand-type of material, yes.
Okay, all right, yeah. Back to one left, one right. I want to take this opportunity, you know, we've been having noise issues for many, many years on this, and actually, there's a lot of finger pointing going on between the FAA and the airlines. FAA saying the pilots take control of it, and airlines say, "Well, not really." You know, I mean, it's the FAA, it's regulated and stuff like that. Now, we had requested three major airlines, which were Southwest, United, and Virgin America, to turn left later, basically. And Virgin America seemed to have complied with that, but Southwest and United didn't. So it seems that the pilots really do have some control over this, and that these other two airlines are just kind of blatant about it, like, so what? You know what I mean? So from your perspective, who has control over this? FAA or the pilots?
From my perspective, it's a little bit of both. There's periods of time where the FAA is really deciding the routing that an aircraft is going to take, and it's essentially asking a pilot to follow an invisible pathway in the sky. And then it's really incumbent on the pilot to follow that pathway, but the pilots also got the flexibility for safety purposes to deviate from that pathway should a situation arise that he or she feels requires action. So to answer your question, I think that it is in both the hands of the FAA and airlines and our airport, and we kind of view it as a collaborative effort, working with CLIF and our Noise Roundtable. That's kind of our forum to surface these concerns. From an airport perspective, we continue to work with the airlines to provide education. Good example would be that departure off of the 28s that turns right. And really, we want to see that turn right before Highway 101. There are times where we see some deviations that take it over San Bruno Mountain, and then we see some noise impact in your community.
That's going to get mildly.
Sure.
Those are the loudest ones.
Right, and so that's an area-
Right over and blam.
Yeah, and so that's an area where we continue to provide education to highlight the importance of pilots following that standard procedure to ensure that the impact on the communities is kept to a minimum.
Just one more, just on the matting, jumping back to the matting. So did you say 28 left and right are both completed now?
28 left and right are completed. We did not need to install that type of matting on those runways because we had a sufficient length of existing tarmac from which we could carve out a thousand feet on one end, six hundred feet on the other end, to meet the requirements. In the case of one left and one right, those are already two of our shorter runways. And to do that with those runways would have cut down the usable length of the runway. So the other alternative that the FAA prescribed was the installation of these EMAS systems, and that's why we're putting it in those runways.
I see, okay.
Yeah, exactly, so we can retain use of the maximum length.
And that was completed before the Korean Airline accident, the Asiana Airlines?
Yes, actually, the work on Runways 28 left and 28 right was certified on June 28th. So literally, a week before the Asiana accident, we essentially doubled the amount of threshold that was available to that aircraft. But as you well know, it simply wasn't enough.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Terry, did you want?
Well, I think it's going to be nice when we have the less flyovers and the diversion of traffic to other cities. And I hope that it doesn't make us relax on what we're doing to try to stop it because we get apathetic and enjoy that lack of flyovers. So it's good to be made aware of it, and good luck with the construction. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Doug, thank you for coming today. Very good presentation. I was hoping you could go back to that one slide that had the map.
Sure.
With the Midwest, East Coast, Europe flights. There you go. So I'm glad that you talked about, you know, some of the disruption that we may occur, or that might occur with the construction. So here we have these flights making this turn, heading east. Brisbane's to the north. But as we know, not all flights that depart for this pathway actually make the turn before Brisbane. So, and I know, I see Bert here, hello Bert. What's the percentage of flights that do not make the proper turn and thus go over Brisbane and give us that buzz cut, and when they do, flyover?
We might have to pull some data on that unless you-
Yeah, pull some data, but I can tell you that from the Fly Quiet program-
Maybe when it comes up, Bert- Please come forward, sorry, but it's on TV and it won't pick you up.
No problem.
And you did your name, so yeah.
My name is Bert Gannon, Aircraft Noise Abatement Manager, SFO.
Great.
I can say that through the Fly Quiet program, we've been really hitting the airlines hard on shoreline departures. They've been doing very well. The scores have been increasing for the airlines, which means they're improved. And we're actually doubling our effort again to make sure that the airlines are aware of this for this time period.
Sure, yes, because now we'll have more of these flights, I guess, and so that'll increase the opportunity for more flights to potentially come over Brisbane. If the pilot finds him or herself unable to make the turn, is there an option to continue, say, going straight to the west of Brisbane, and then eventually making the turn eastward, say, through the Golden Gate? Or is that, isn't that kind of part of the proper procedure if they don't make the turn?
There is a procedure where they will depart through the gaps, called a gap departure, just like normal.
Yeah.
But they would route them north along the peninsula, and then northwest, and then turn right again to go east, over the Golden Gate. So I believe the FAA is going to be using all their cards to be able to make this happen. So we have straight out through the gap, we'll have gap north to turn east, and then we'll have the right turn east. It all depends on the volume of traffic, the flow of the Bay Area. All these factors will be considered.
Sure. And you know, Doug, you answered Councilmember Conway's question in regards to whether it's the FAA or the pilot's decision. These turns here, if they were going wide on the turn, that would be more of a pilot's decision, whereas going out of the port, making that left turn over Brisbane is really directed by the FAA at TRACON?
We would, what we would do is, through Bert's office, we'd investigate those types of incidents. In other words, we'd have to go back and reconstruct what happened to get a feel for what drove that deviation, if you will. If it was a pilot-related deviation, or if it was a controller-dictated deviation. So that's part of the analysis and the assessment that we'd go through.
Yes, but essentially, though, when they're making that turn, when they're coming out of, off the runway, that's the pilot's making that turn, not the FAA telling them when to turn. Is that correct, when they're coming off of this particular? Right, whereas the other route that comes over Brisbane, when they make that turn, that's the FAA saying, "Okay, yes, we want you to make the turn."
Correct. On the shoreline departure, the airlines have to get to four hundred feet above ground level before they make the turn for safety.
Okay.
And so if the airplane's climbing slow, hot day, humid, things like that, will all contribute to an aircraft not performing as well as it could.
Sure.
So the aircraft would then be waiting to get to four hundred feet before turning right.
Okay.
A lot of times, these turns are all dialed in with the computer, so then the aircraft would then slowly roll into the turn. That's where we've experienced most of them, they come over the back of Mount San Bruno.
Sure, and this construction is going to be going on during the summer, so it'll be the hottest months typically.
Fortunately, it's cool here, though.
Yeah, in August, for sure, yeah.
San Bruno Mountain's 1,300 feet high.
As Bert's mentioned, you know, this will, because there will be more of these shoreline departures, we're conducting additional outreach to the airlines to get the word out now for their pilot community, to really highlight the importance of flying a good shoreline departure because there will be more aircraft utilizing this procedure than before.
Sure, sure, and you know, and I have noticed a decrease in those, these flights that have flown over Brisbane, so I'm glad that, you know, you're kind of putting some pressure on airlines to do a better job, but of course, you know, it only takes one flight at, you know, 2:00 in the morning or whatever to wake somebody up.
It really is.
Yeah.
We appreciate the notice.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thanks, Cliff.
I have one, sort of beyond the scope of what you're talking about, but it's relevant in a way because you're involved in runway construction and that is the whole question of your long-run planning for sea level rise. At some point, you're going to have to worry about that, I assume.
We are already focused on sea level rise. You know, we've certainly seen the revised floodplain mapping for the area. You know, we already have, we've got about eight miles of shoreline along the airport property and a good portion of it already has a seawall, but we're conducting an assessment right now. We began a two-year study, site assessment, that began in January, so it'll wrap January of 2017, to evaluate all of our coastline and to evaluate our ability to protect ourselves from really two things, and that is a projected sea level rise and also the so-called 100-year storm. In other words, a storm so severe that it only comes around about every 100 years. And so we're in the process right now of assessing what, if anything, we would need to do to address those two factors. We've also reached out to some of the other communities because obviously we share the shoreline with other communities to ensure that we're kind of taking a regional approach to the solutions that we come up with. So that's on the radar, no pun intended.
Okay, yeah, okay, glad to hear that. Would you mind answering questions from the public?
Happy to.
Are any, yeah? Any members of the public like to ask questions? Barbara?
Hi, Barbara Ebel, Brisbane. I'm just curious, in the event that there is an overshoot and the EMAS is destroyed, I mean, obviously it's damaged when that happens, what, do you guys have more, run out there with more bricks or is it just screwed up for a while? I was just wondering if you could say a few words about that.
Sure, and you know, we conduct an annual emergency exercise and as we talk about, you know, topics to drill on, certainly one of them is, this is a tool that you hope you never use, but when you do, this will effectively render that runway inoperative for some period of time. So essentially, we'll find ourselves in the same situation that we were in in July when Asiana's wreckage took out one of our runways for a period of about a week and we certainly felt the operational effects of it. We had over 850 flight cancellations in a period of about seven days, so we need all four of those runways as much as possible. So we would have to go through a recovery process to make the runway usable again. I'll check with our engineers to see if we've ordered extra blocks, if you will. I'm sure there's a protocol or a plan to allow for that recoverability, but yes, I mean, if one that does get used would render the runway inoperative for some period of time and our goal would be to limit how long that would be.
And the other, Michelle?
I called, Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident. I called and complained when the flights' pattern changed when they were doing the work on the other runways. Would have been really helpful if we'd had some explanation about that. I don't know whether we did, but it certainly wasn't made public where I saw it, but it was explained to me on the call back from the airport about why the noise pattern had changed and why we were having those flyovers on the weekends. And I think it's really important that we, even though this pattern looks like it'll be a benefit for us compared to how bad it was over the last several months while they were working on the other runways, I think it's really important that people are aware that there's a temporary change in pattern so that when it goes back to quote-unquote "normal," that they realize that things are just going back to normal bad instead of worse bad. I know that sounds really funny, but, I mean, the 5:00 AM flyovers were just brutal, just brutal during the construction that you did on the other runways. It was just, it would go till midnight, start again at 5:00 AM on the weekends and so, once I knew what was happening, I could kind of go, it's temporary for months, but it was temporary. And so I think it's important people realize that. So we really need to have an outreach campaign so that people understand the dynamics of what's happening. Thanks, and thanks for presenting because this really does help understand. I was wondering when you were going to start working on the other runways and how it would affect us, but if that person that called me back about my complaint had not taken the time to explain that, I would have continued to be not only woken up but angry.
I appreciate that feedback and our plan is to keep the communities informed on this process. When this work is done, our five, six-year program to conduct this work will be concluded and essentially, the ongoing runway work we'll do is the routine overnight, scraping rubber off the runways and repainting and doing kind of the routine maintenance, if you will. We will also keep the public informed on the timeline for this. I mentioned the plan is for it to run through the end of September. That construction plan does have cushion built into it, so the potential is there that this work may conclude a little earlier in the month of September and we'll certainly keep the public notified about how that schedule is shaping up.
Sounds good. No other requests, I see? No? Okay, so we thank you very much for coming and informing us and we now know what to expect and that's very helpful and very much appreciated.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. I guess you were a part of why they were here?
Yes.
For inviting them.
Okay, so I don't know whether there's going to be any initial statement from staff on this, but the next item is a presentation by the Urban Land Institute representatives regarding the technical assistance panel for the Crocker Park. John, did you want to say any preliminary remarks before the representatives come up?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just by way of background, in the budget for this year, the city did authorize $10,000 for the Crocker Park Technical Assistance Panel in cooperation with Urban Land Institute or ULI. I know several years meetings ago, there was some question about that program and what that work effort would entail, so a couple of members of ULI have graciously offered to come this evening and talk a little bit about their experience with the program, provide a little explanation. And the two members who are here tonight are Alan Talansky and Sean Sharpentier. I hope I said that right. And with that, I turn it over to them and I can thank them for attending tonight.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Alan Talansky and I'm a neighbor, I live in San Mateo. I'm chairman of the Technical Analysis Panel Committee of the ULI. I, in fact, live too close to participate directly in this panel because it would be a conflict of interest, but it's something that I'm excited about, but let me give you an overview and rather than just go on and on, I'm going to read a little piece on what the technical analysis panel is and a little background on it and then ask me any questions and then I'll ask Sean to come up, who experienced a ULI panel in East Palo Alto, even though he is now at the Port of Oakland as an aviation project manager. So we can ask him aviation questions to check on the other guys. This'll be good, okay? So the Urban Land Institute has been conducting advisory service panels since 1947. It's a public outreach. District councils have been conducting these local advisory councils and they're commonly referred to as technical assistance panels or TAPS for about 13 years. Generally, the TAP are one and a half days in length and draw on the expertise available locally within a district council and that's regionally. We have probably one of the largest district councils and most experienced district councils in the country in the San Francisco area and that would cover the same area that the MTC covers, basically, as the ULI. And the ULI San Francisco will provide expert advice to public agencies, nonprofit organizations, and universities facing complex land use and real estate issues in the Greater Bay Area. We've also been asked to participate on the Davis campus on a major rebuild because they wanted to bring the expertise from the San Francisco Bay Area. And it's, it's an interesting way to do it. Now, we draw from the seasoned professionals, as I said, and we offer objective, responsible guidance on a variety of land use and real estate issues, ranging from site-specific projects to public policy questions. Once clients are selected and the ULI selects clients out of a group of clients and why we select them is, it is a public outreach and basically the $10,000 doesn't pay anyone, it just pays for the expenses of putting it together and manning it and doing everything we need to do. None of the expertise is paid for. But what we'll do is we'll assemble a panel, a volunteer panel, with a professional writer. The client provides a briefing book, you would provide a briefing book prior to the panel session. If desired by the client, we have an open site visit. A portion of the sessions, these visits are open to the public and the site visit will generally include interviews with various stakeholders to give the participants from the ULI an overview of how the community feels because we think you can't do this in a vacuum. This, we have to understand the whole issue. Immediately following the site visit, the panel deliberates onsite and basically it takes about one and a half days for this whole process. And then, over a period of two months, we present the findings and recommendation so that you have a final report. The report is produced, again, within two months and the TAP program is, it's flexible and we want to provide a customized approach to specific land use. And we'll give overviews, we'll give specific issues and that will work how the TAP is chaired. And the TAP chair plays a critical role in producing a quality TAP and the person that is that chair has a lot of experience and they're usually active in the ULI, they're qualified who have done this before for other people in other cities, usually on a national advisory panel, which is a longer panel or a TAP. The TAP chairs have leadership experience, they can talk to city councils, they can talk to citizens and they will, whatever you'd like them to do, they'll explain what they're doing and how they're doing it. Okay, and now, I've done TAPS in San Carlos, in Dearden Station in San Jose, I was the chair of that TAP. That TAP kept expanding and went on for two years at the request of San Jose and other people, but it was basically deciding what we were going to do with Dearden Station and the surrounding area. What I'd like to do now is stop and not go through the rest of this, but let me say again, the TAP has to be objective. If there's anyone within the area or anyone close, they have to sign something that says they won't compete, they won't disclose, and they will be objective. And that's the difference between this and a consulting panel. Consultants, as you know, come in and want to stay. A panel like this is a one-time panel. You won't get these guys again because they're usually running companies and they're running large companies, but they want to do this as an outreach for the ULI because it's great experience and it gets them to work with other members of the ULI that they don't usually work with. So a panel will be made up of a developer, a planner, a public policy person, someone who might be the city manager of another city, someone who might run a planning department of another city, an economics person who looks at the economic feasibility, usually someone who can do drawings, you know, an overall planner. So you have all this talent coming in for a day and a half and then for the months afterwards while creating the report. So it's a bargain and it's a bargain because the ULI wants to do it because we want to get to know the communities and we want the communities to know us. Sean, can you come up and tell us a little bit?
Of course. Thank you, my name is, sorry, my name is Sean Sharpentier and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I worked with the city of East Palo Alto and I was lucky enough to be able to recruit a ULI TAP for a large specific plan and program EIR that I was managing. It was the Ravenswood Business District specific plan and it included downtown area and also a large industrial area that was formerly used for heavy industry. There was about 1.3 million square feet of commercial space, 835 residential units, 38 acres of parks and five miles of trails in it. And I recruited the TAP and they worked with me and it was a really good experience for them and for the city and I think there were sort of four primary ways that we truly benefited from the process. The first was that it was a fresh set of eyes and an objective set of eyes. I had been, I and many others have been working on the specific plan for many years and when the TAP came in, they reviewed the draft specific plan, so all of our fresh ideas were in the book. And they came in and with a fresh set of eyes and came up with new ways of looking at it and some new ideas. The second major benefit is that it's a very diverse group of panelists. We had a real estate developer, we had an economist, an urban designer, a public policy legal expert, and an affordable housing developer. And that was really important for the city is that it be sort of a collaborative process that reflects many of the different viewpoints that are necessary to make public-private partnerships work and also to attract investment. The third major benefit I felt was that they came up with some really good ideas and they were so good that I added four of them to the specific plan as specific plan policies around the phasing of development, strategies to encourage the assemblage of parcels and the phasing of infrastructure. The fourth major benefit that I felt was that it was a phenomenal communication piece. It's a great way to get exposure with a variety of stakeholders that I mentioned. Both the briefing packet, I have a copy of the one I did, and the final report are excellent documents and they proved to be invaluable once I got the program EIR certified in terms of communicating with developers and public policy people and people who were able to advise us on attracting investment into that area. So for the whole, it was very useful. It created a lot of exposure in the private sector, which was good. The industrial area where we were working was characterized by smaller parcels, so there wasn't a lot of activity from large institutional developers and institutional capital and having something like this was extremely helpful in communicating with them once the plan and the program EIR were adopted and certified. I can't, I'm also a ULI member, but I can't speak highly enough of this. It's a really wonderful program and it's beneficial for all parties involved.
Would you give sort of a schedule of the activity that this group engaged in? Was this a one and a half day panel?
They devote time over one and a half days or two days, so-
What kind of schedule would they follow? How would they collect information and what?
So what happens is, several weeks before, I produced the briefing packet and then also produced documents, the draft plan, and gave that to the members in the ULI to review in advance. Then on the day of, the first day that they come in, it's sort of an intensive activity where we did a tour of the area. I gave them a presentation, we gave them a brief introduction from, I think it was the vice mayor and the city manager. Then they worked with stakeholders from the community, a variety of different stakeholders, property owners, elected officials, community advocates, affordable housing advocates. And what they did is they interviewed them and they wanted to find out what was going on. How to understand the area in a day is really hard, even for people who do this like myself for a living. So they tried to gather as much information from the written documents prior to the first day and then on the day of the- day, and then on the day of the event, they were in the field and they were interacting with some of the key players. Then, they worked the full day, and then they would bring me in occasionally and bounce ideas off me, or say, this is what we heard, is this sort of your understanding, or how does this conform with this other piece of information that may have been contradictory? Then they come back the following day and work on a presentation that summarizes their understanding and then some of their recommendations. And then they made that presentation in a public meeting. I structured it so that it was a large outreach meeting, and I did a significant amount of outreach to the real estate community for that presentation. They presented their excellent ideas at that presentation. And then they started, they and the city and myself started working on the final document. Does that make sense?
That helps to understand.
Sean, you're better than me, I'm telling you. I want you to come with me everywhere. It's, the MTC sponsored about 20 of these technical analysis panels for the station area work, all over the peninsula. And they did, they did a book about this thick of those 30. I think our piece on Dearden Station was about 35 pages. And the one and a half days is to get a feel on the site and be on the site intensely and to meet the people. A lot of the work is done afterwards. We meet several times after one of these meetings, both on the phone and in person, in order to bring together our report, and in many cases, we go and check back for the city, or we ask questions of stakeholders who have brought something up. And this is all with permission of the city, of course, this is because the city, if the city is the client, that's who our client is. But we're pretty independent in giving you good, open, honest advice based on what we see. And part of it is, you're going to be asking the questions. You're going to ask us questions, and we're going to give you the answers as we see them. They might be multiple answers, but we're going to give you the answers. We're going to be doing one in San Mateo probably in March. So we'll also be doing a technical analysis panel in San Mateo, and that's an overview panel, a lot like yours is, looking at an issue and saying, give us some directions to go here. What do you think? And you guys have been looking at this, everyone here probably has been looking at this forever. What we're going to do is we're going to bring in fresh eyes for you, and we're going to say, look at it this way, look at it this way, look at it this way, and here are some possibilities. And this is how the community feels, by the way. So that's what we're going to do, and we have the luxury of coming in and being totally honest with you. So...
We have no problem getting honest things around here.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Clark, you want to...
No, I actually heard the presentation.
Heard this before, okay. So Terry?
Go ahead.
No, no, I was going to, you know, just say a couple of things and then, you know, invite members of the public to make, if you don't mind, ask questions and so forth.
Of course.
Yeah, right. So have you been working on a scope of work, or, I know we've been talking about, you know, the Crocker Industrial Park, but is that what your understanding is? Or how does the scope get defined, and how does this all get delineated so you all know what you're looking at?
Actually, the city is the body that makes the application and poses the questions. The way ULI likes to run the program is to focus on certain questions that the program is intended to answer, and that's an activity that we're underway with the subcommittee, the Economic Development Subcommittee, sort of framing those issues and questions that we want answered as part of this advisory panel.
The primary focus is on Crocker Park.
Uh huh.
And the questions are related to...
And then, so a series of questions are developed, and then they are submitted eventually to the panel. So then, it sounds as if it's important that this day and a half, particularly the day where you're collecting information, is really carefully planned so that you're actually talking to all the key stakeholders, or otherwise, you're going to miss a lot of key information.
Exactly. That's why we do it well in advance.
Right. So who, you know, makes sure that all happens and brings it all together? Is that the city's responsibility, or does the chair of the TAP play a role in that, or what?
The city will, and we've been working with the Subcommittee as to identifying the stakeholders or potential stakeholders, work with the panel, the chairperson, because again, they do have certain limitations of time, and so we've been trying to work through sort of the stakeholder issues. And I think part of the issue here is, this was really intended to provide an overview of the TAP program, it wasn't intended to be a sort of a summary of the Crocker Park TAP.
I'm trying to understand the process.
Well, part of the process is, we have a full-time executive director who works for the ULI. And she will work with the city in order to set up the schedule, arrange that the people are going to be there, make sure the panel's available.
Right.
We've sent letters out to potential panelists, recruiting the panelists that we think would be the best panelists for Brisbane. And she will work with city staff in order to make sure that that day is done right.
Okay, okay. I get it.
And I'll be here, but I'll be here strictly as an observer, because I already have all my opinions set. And so, I've been here too much, I've been to Brisbane too much.
Oh, you never be to Brisbane too much.
Oh, okay. But it's, it's an exciting, it's an exciting process, and being that you're getting the talent you're getting, for what you're getting it for, it's a bargain. No one's really selling you anything, we're just charging enough to cover what it costs the ULI and bringing some great people in here.
Yeah, no, no, it sounds fine. So are there members of the public who would like to ask questions? Let's see, I see a whole bunch. Mitch, did I say your name?
Mitch Bull, president and CEO of the Brisbane Chamber. I'm also a member of the Economic Development Subcommittee, and we have been discussing this for many months and have met with ULI. And rather than a question, I do want to impress upon everyone here that I think it's a very, very good opportunity, and it's not a be-all, end-all. It is a planning tool. It is, it's a workshop. It gives us an opportunity to look at Crocker Park 2.0, if, to use just a term. Crocker Park is 30 to 60 years old, and the buildings are, you know, are filled sometimes, not filled other times. But this gives us an opportunity to really look at a strategy and have, you know, regional experts that come in to help the stakeholders here, from community groups, to the city, to the brokers, to the landowners, because we can't do anything without their input. And the goal is to maximize all of our input as much as possible with some non, with experts that are not tied, and they can have an honest, open opinion, but, you know, we can also put it on the shelf and say, eh, we don't want to do that. But that's up to the community. So it's a tool to really bring as much expertise as we can, listen to what the community wants, and to figure out some kind of strategic plan for what Crocker Park can and what we'd like it to be five, 10, 15, 20 years in the future. So that's really kind of what we're trying to do. That's all I want to say.
Have you been a part of any of these?
No, I have not.
Okay, so it's been a new experience for you.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks.
Just before someone else comes up, a friend of mine who I've done some planning with, he says basically, a plan is a genetic code of a community. Many times, it can't happen overnight, might take 20 years or 25 years. But what this does is this at least gives us a goal. And it's great to have that goal, so it ends up the way we see it, we'd like it to end up someday.
Okay, all right. So I saw some other hands. Let's see, Carolyn and, yeah, back there. Okay.
I can't say how excited I am to hear about this, because Crocker Park kind of divides Brisbane from the ridge and downtown Brisbane as well. It divides kind of the city in half. But I have a question, and the question I have is about Sierra Point. Now, I know this, the focus is on Crocker Park, and my question was, since this is one time, you know, we only have one time, why wasn't, why did you decide on just Crocker Park and not include Sierra Point? Thanks.
I think that's a question for the committee, because I can't answer it, and I'm sure that they don't know either. It's probably for Clark and Cliff to answer.
We're actually looking at a contiguous landmass, and it will include actually the quarry and also out to Old County Road, by the park area, the shopping center area, everything, the bank and all that. So Sierra Point's kind of a different landmass, you know what I mean? It's separate and kind of like the Baylands, it's, you know, would have to do its own separate one, you know, to really kind of pull it together like in a day and a half. This is a monumental task just for the area that we're looking at, so that's why we're choosing that. And it's long-term, too, because Sierra Point, most of that has been planned out already. I mean, there's buildings out there right now that, there's two sites that are already approved, and there's only three sites left, basically, that haven't been developed.
Do you want to add to that?
Sure. Yeah, Carolyn, you know, with only a day and a half, and like Alan's saying, you know, we're only paying $10,000. So we have to try and keep things as focused as possible. And we felt that since, you know, Crocker is our, kind of our industrial engine, that, but as Mitch is saying, it's getting older, it needs to be revamped, and so that we could, you know, concentrate our efforts in this particular area. Sierra Point, we're still working on the design guidelines, and hopefully, you know, sometime next year, it comes before the council and we can get the design guidelines, the updated ones approved, and then start to focus on perhaps implementing some of, you know, some work on that particular area.
Thank you.
So what are, just to follow up, so what are the chances of, suppose we really like the outcome here and we use a lot of it, what are the chances of them having a second TAP, you know, in Sierra Point in a year or so?
We, you can apply, and obviously, if we were already working with the community, the ULI would look at it favorably, but you can apply, and I think something could be done. We have done multiple TAPS in Oakland, we've probably done five. There's no reason Brisbane shouldn't have more than one.
Okay. All right. Okay. Let's see, I saw Jamie in the back, I think. My eyes. Yeah.
Evening.
Good evening.
I come down here with one purpose, and honest to God, I come down here and here's something else, and I feel like the Rain Man, talking heads, talking heads, talking heads, talking heads, talking heads, talking heads. I hear people saying, "We, I, our..." Does anybody, is this complete memory loss of what's going on in this town today? Today? We've got a group of people here that are working on that DEIR draft. Years ago, if you worked 40 hours a week, you made a living and you took care of your family. We've got people working two jobs, and then they have a 40-hour-a-week job, they're working on the DEIR, the draft. And let me tell you something, do these guys know who Michelle Salmon is? Do they know Dana Dilworth? Do they know Greg Anderson? Are these the people they're talking about that they're in, that they want to have some information from? I will prepare the briefing. I will prepare the briefing. What do you mean, "I will prepare the briefing"? Doesn't the briefing come from the community? When is this place going to be run by the community? This is BS. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. I can't believe that we've got now this sort of, oh, don't look over here at this major project that is taking up the lives and the breath of the people that we have, who are suffering right down to every single day trying to get a night's sleep. And we're going to go do this thing, because Crocker Park, oh, Mr. Lentz, if I recall correctly, you told me it was 90, not me, but the community, it was 91% full. I thought terrific, 91% full, why are we worried about that? 91% is a terrific number, why the heck don't we get some money out of it? That's what I want to know. That's what I want to know. Why don't we get some money out of it? So I don't, I don't care about the TAP. I don't care about the TAP, I don't care about the map, I don't care. I care about these people whose lives are on the line, who are studying that damn thing till they're blind. They're trying to save this community from future problems, and they don't have a lot of time left. There are very few people that stuck it out on the DEIR committee. Some did, and they are busting their butts. Anya, Greg, Kamala, Anjana, Dana, Paul, these are people, and Michelle, these are people that should be up here and being talked to and talked with about what's going on in this community. I'm appalled. I'm just appalled. I'm in shock that we're, let's go play this other game, let's go play this other game, let's get down to business. There's something serious going on here, and it's going to take this community in direction that a lot of people in this community don't want to go. And you people who are out in television land, believe me, you better be paying attention, big attention, big attention. I don't care about all this stuff. 91% full, terrific, where's the money? Who's the Rainmaker? Who's making money for this community? Who works and gets paid in this community and makes money for this community, not just takes money from this community? So as far as, I don't care if it costs $10,000, $10 or $0.10. The bottom line is, where is our focus, guys? Where is it? I can understand listening to a presentation on the airport, we've got to pay attention to that. I have to say a prayer every time a plane goes over my house, that it will make it over the town and not hit the other side of the mountain. That makes sense to me. But quite frankly, this seems like a game, and it does feel like talking heads. You can say whatever you want about me, but I'm telling you, there are people here whose lives, they're busting their lives to save this community, to save this community. And we're not going to go play another game. This isn't time for another game. There's a big game in town, and we better be applying ourselves to that pretty damn quickly. I am just appalled.
Thank you.
You know, if I may just comment.
If you want.
Yeah. You know, I appreciate all the folks that are working on the draft EIR right now. I mean, that is a huge task, and the amount of hours that you've put in has, you know, I totally applaud you. And the work that you're doing will definitely benefit the city in the long run. Who knows when the Baylands is going to get developed? It could be 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. Crocker Park, it's already been developed. It's, you know, it's something that can be worked on right now. And so, we all know that another recession's going to happen, and they go in cycles. And so what we want to do is try and prepare for the future, prepare on something that we have control over. We don't really have a whole lot of control with the Baylands. I mean, it's just, I mean, we're dealing with the developer, that, you know, they're doing their thing, and we're trying to do our thing to make it better, but it's so far out there. Whereas this is something that we can do right now. And what we're trying to do is to get input from the community. And we've talked about it before, I mean, the community is made of, not only of the citizens, but also the property owners, you know, the, you know, the businesses. And how do we make sure that we capture as many people as possible to provide the input to these experts, right, that are going to be coming here for this charrette, so that then we can make the proper steps? And, you know, and Alan, you talked about phasing, and, and, you know, you get this information, what are you going to do with it? Right? And so, you know, I, I think it'd be good if you talked a little bit about that. You know, we have to remember, what, what's in our general plan, you know, under, you know, these economic goals? I mean, so we have these in our general plan. We want to try and take that information that has come from the community and implement it, make it something that we can use, so that we diversify the amount of money that comes into our city, so that when the next recession does happen, we're in a good position to, to weather through the storm.
What we do is, you ask the questions, and we give you different paths to go, that we think are the best paths to go into the next phase. And the community picks the path. The stakeholders help pick the path, okay? But you have, you have a question that you need answered. Well, what kind of zoning should we have in Crocker Park? Maybe that's one of the answers, one of the questions. And I don't know if it is. And we could say, well, this zoning will result in this, and this zoning will result in this, and this zoning will result in this. We think this is the best one, but it's up to the community what it wants to do. And basically, what we're providing is a tool to get by the talk, to get by the discussions, to move forward and say, this is a direction we think we ought to go in as a community. And there's communities it's worked in. There's communities that are, today have solved some of their problems, and some of it came from the tap, but some of it came from the community. But you have to have a plan. And if you don't have a plan, your, your boat's never going to reach shore. It's just going to keep going around in the water. It's going to be like talking heads, because everyone has another decision to make. What we want to do is give you a footprint, a platform to work with, that gives you ideas on how to move forward. Now, East Palo Alto, that hasn't had a great time of it in the last so many years, took three of the ideas that the panel had. Now, those three ideas were very important ideas. Were they three or four?
There were four.
Four. Okay, four ideas to the specific plan that were important enough for them to stop and change the specific plan, that the community has already come up with. Well, there's a benefit there. One good idea is worth a day and a half, and one good idea is worth all the input that the community had to give, let alone three or four good ideas. And, and that's what we're going to do. And we're going to get you those ideas from people who are out there making a living every day and making decisions every day that even, either keep their businesses afloat or don't. And, and that's what we do. We've kept our business afloat, and we're growing. Okay? But to do that, you just have to listen and have to give the input, have to want the answers. And if you don't like the answers, tell us you don't like the answers. It's, it's that simple. It's communicating, it's being open, it's wanting to listen, and we're not here to sell you anything. We're not, we're not selling stuff here. And we're not selling long consulting contracts. And we're not selling deals, and we're not going to come in the next day and say, here, sign this paper. It's not what we're doing. We're coming in because we, we're the ULI, we're the Urban Land Institute, we want to help communities.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's see. Okay, there's a gentleman in the back, he's a new one.
I'm Dave Cremel.
Lift it up.
Oh, yeah, thanks. I just want to say, I haven't heard anything but good about, about this program and what you guys are doing. And everything sounds positive to me, everything I heard. And as someone who has been giving my own time on the projects that Jamie was talking about, I want to say thanks to you. Sounds like you guys are giving your time to our community, and, I don't know, just sounds like all positive to me. And so I say hats off for the community. Sounds like we're getting a good bang for the buck and a good program all around. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Michelle, I see. Oh, okay. Barbara and Laurie, okay.
Well, I'm Michelle Salmon, and I'm really happy to meet both of you. So now you do know me. I am, Jamie, I adore you and I love your passion, but in this case, we disagree. I am ecstatic to have this tap come to Brisbane. Crocker Industrial Park, I remember when they, I'm actually old enough to remember the very first building. And it is, it was an amazing thing that they built there for its time. Only it's old, and it's, it's no longer a cohesive plan, and it's been patched and added on to here. And I, I sort of have a, you know, I want a new car, and I want it to be a electric car, and I'm really excited about that, but it's going to be a while. And that doesn't mean that I'm not going to change the oil in my current car, and I'm not going to change the tires, and I'm not going to take good care of it, and make sure that it keeps running until I can afford to buy a new electric car. And that's kind of how Crocker Park is, except that it's even more. And Crocker Park needs help. And we might have a 91% occupancy rate right now, but as we all know, it's not a cohesive occupancy rate, and it's not always the businesses that we would most want there. And, you know, Crocker Park is a very sensitive area. It's, the watershed for San Bruno Mountain runs through Crocker Park. We have some serious problem, we have the beautiful vision that was Lawrence Halpern's vision when he first built this landscaped light industrial park, but that's starting to pale. We have some serious plant problems in Crocker Industrial Park with the Monterey pines being mature and subject to dying, right and left, bark beetle. We're going to lose all of them, all of them eventually. So we need a new plan for Crocker Industrial Park. And, and it is, as, as Carolyn pointed out, it is the linkage between Brisbane, the old part of town, and the northeast ridge. And it's also the interface for San Bruno Mountain, one of the greatest treasures we have left in, in, in the Bay Area. And so I hope that when they do put together the tap, that you include an environmentalist. Because Crocker Industrial Park is so closely tied with the environment of San Bruno Mountain, serves as the watershed to, you know, that feeds the lagoon and the bay. And, you know, we have a green building ordinance now, we want to incorporate those things. I, I see a whole new vision for Crocker Industrial Park, and this excites me. And it's not the onerous horrible thing that I'm looking at when I, you know, read the draft DEIR for the Baylands. This is like a bright, hopeful spot, where I'd love to have a, have a vision of daylighting the creeks in, in Crocker Industrial Park and integrating the native habitat back with the industrial aspects, the light industrial aspects, so that people want to come here to work. They beg to come here to work, because it is great to work in the shadow of San Bruno Mountain and be part of Brisbane, and to have an integrated pattern. And to do that, sometimes we need that outside vision and that expertise, and, and from people who are dedicated but not tied to a salary related to it. And so I'm very excited about this, and I can't wait for this to happen. And I want to be part of that vision and talk about what I see for Crocker Industrial Park. So I, I'm all for it, and I think it's a great park, and I think what you guys are doing for us is amazing. So you have my wholehearted support on it. And, and the frog video that San Bruno Mountain did on the Cypress Wetlands won an audience award for the Bernal Heights Film Festival, so I can't wait to show it to the tap. Hopefully, they'll want to see it as part of what the vision of, of Crocker Industrial Park in the 21st century could be. And so I'm really excited about this, and it's really a bright spot, and it gives me a lot of hope while we deal with this hard part over here. We've got this other part here that's going to be really good. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Barbara?
Barbara, you go first, Spain. Um, Michelle got up here first.
I'm older.
Yeah. I, I can't gush as much as Michelle does, because frankly, I have read the DEIR pretty much front to back at this point, and I have not been following this issue, so, but I want to thank my council for continuing to move forward on it, because as Michelle said, it, I feel, I agree with her view that we need all aspects of this community, both the Baylands, downtown, the ridge, Crocker Park, all to work together. We need to have a cohesive whole moving forward. And my only concern, you know, so I'm not going to say I'm super for this or I'm super against this, because I just haven't been following this issue enough, and I don't know what the values are, yada, yada, yada. But I too was also concerned that there is going to be some sort of environmentalist involved with this, or, you know, permaculture expert, or somebody sustainability expert who's going to be included in this panel moving forward. Because the one thing I don't think we need is, old speak, where highest and best use drives everything. I don't think that's what Brisbane needs moving forward, is, you know, build, baby, build. So as long as that's not the, what we're going to get, you know, if that's the answer we're going to get, then I don't need it, personally. But, so as long as I think this, you know, I think it could potentially be a very good thing, as long as they take a comprehensive view. Okay? Thanks.
Thanks.
I, I think it's a great idea to have an environmentalist who has a expertise in horticulture, that understands the trees and understands the, the native habitat around here. I think it's important to do that. And I wrote that down, and I'm going to see that that happens. Because we have whole committees at the ULI on just those issues.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, thanks. Let's see, Laurie, I think is first, and then Craig, and then, you know, we'll get, okay.
Thank you. Laurie Liu, Brisbane resident. I did get a chance to go to the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. Thank you, Cliff, for inviting me to that. And I was really excited to hear about the, you know, proposal to have this, this panel. I think it, it could be a really great opportunity to reinvigorate the park, even though it is 91% occupied, I think there's still so much potential to bring it up to, you know, what the vision is of, you know, today and tomorrow for, for our community. And, you know, even the name, Crocker Industrial Park, in some ways is outdated, you know? Do we really want to be known as an industrial park? Can we think of other, other ways just to brand it, to attract more businesses? And I like the idea that it's multidisciplinary, that there's people, experts from different areas, giving their unbiased, expert advice on, you know, in very different areas, and working together collaboratively. And what, one thing that I, you know, I really am hoping is that it, it doesn't get just put on a shelf. I hear that that's been a concern in discussions, and I'd really like to, to know whether, you know, I, I understand, we don't currently have anyone on staff who does economic development. So, you know, I'm curious to know, how do you work with cities where, you know, we don't have anyone at this time to really take this and implement it? So how useful is it to do it now, before we may have some expertise, or if, you know, we don't even know if we're ever going to have that? You know, what other ways can we actually make this, you know, be useful with our current staffing and with the people that we have? And also, I think, you know, looking at the 91% occupancy, also need to look that, look at the, the area that's now planned for mixed use by the shop, by the shopping center. I think that having a panel that looks at the, what sort of design considerations can we use to really take that area that's such a gateway to Brisbane to, you know, to really attract more businesses? I think that's a great opportunity to, to think about how to incorporate, you know, a potential site for housing with maybe some retail and some existing businesses as well, and how to really integrate that. And one, one type of expert I'd like to see on the panel would be someone who can talk about, or who has an expertise in public art. One of my ideas would be, you know, to use public art like, like murals, to have them on the buildings throughout the industrial park, to have some, some areas that are landscaped, to have some artwork, some, some art, and some, some parks that really are multi, multi-useful, and to integrate that with the business community, community, and to use that to harness and attract more businesses into Brisbane. So I'd love to see that on the panel as well. So I'm excited about, about having this go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie. Craig?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Greg Anderson. I live at 349 San Bruno Avenue, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Citizens Committee to Review the Baylands, which Jamie so passionately spoke about earlier. I also greatly appreciate her passion, and she'll always be the one to point out the emperor in the room, if his wardrobe is not intact. But all that aside, everything I've heard about this program so far sounds wonderful, and the only concern that I have is with the landowners. And certainly, if everything comes out as described, how could they not be excited about this program? Well, the answer is, if they are completely indifferent about their land ownership. So I think that perhaps getting some idea about the involvement and the interest of the people who happen to be landowners down there, who, who I know nothing about, to find out if they would actually be involved in a program like this, or if they live in other countries and will continue to say, oh, you know, I get my rent, and that's all I care about. You know, if we have owners that are engaged, then I think it's a great program. But I don't know about that. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. First.
Hi, I'm Larry Purcell, and fortunate enough to have been a business owner in this park for over 30 years. And if you hear me talk about Crocker Industrial Park, you'll hear me to say the words, finest industrial park in the northern peninsula runaway. And if I'm sitting over here and I'm looking at the city, I'm saying, here's Brisbane, what's my number one asset right now? What puts money in the coffers? This Crocker Industrial Park puts one hell of a lot of money in the coffers. So not having been privy to your budget situation, and somebody said, let's put $10,000 bucks down there, to at least have a little fun there, to see what's happening, what's going on. And I, and I think the point that hasn't been made clear enough, maybe to this point, is I look at this as a perfect marriage. I look at this as a city who is fortunate enough to be at 91%, still has the hottest property in town, but it's like every other good asset, you have to put money into maintenance, make sure the tires are still good, and are we utilizing this asset in the way that we should? So through these gentlemen, we have bargain basement special expertise of people who have walked the walk, stand in the pits, been in the trenches, and for a mere pittance of covering expenses, will take with all their knowledge, and here's the important part, and listen to, we're using a term, people who have stakeholders or whatever, that's people on the hill, that's business people in the valley, that's business owners, that's landowners, that's the city, that's, all the interested people have a chance to come up and be heard. So gone are the days when it's the voice from the hill, or it's the voice from the valley, or it's the city council. Now is an opportunity, hear everybody, let these gentlemen sort through it and say, based on what we heard, these are some sound steps to consider, okay? Now to Laurie's point, is there funds available to say, okay, let's take all those points and start running with it? No, but... owners, that's landowners, that's the city, that's, all the interested people have a chance to come up and be heard. So, gone are the days when it's the voice from the hill, or it's the voice from the valley, or it's the city council. Now is an opportunity, hear everybody, let these gentlemen sort through it and say, based on what we heard, these are some sound steps to consider, okay? Now to Laurie's point, is there funds available to say, okay, let's take all those points and start running with it? No, but we'll have a roadmap for a very reasonable price within the budget limit that Stu's got, to say, hey, these are some real, now, how do we, with our limited funds and so forth, how do we start to get some of these in motion? By the end of the day and a half, and then two or three weeks later, or months later, when it gets through their final report, we have a valuable asset, everybody has right of authorship because every interest has been able to be heard. So that is now a real valuable asset. Because nobody can say, well, you didn't hear me, you didn't hear me. Everybody gets heard, okay? And then as opposed to, say, the city council who gets bombarded all the time, either from the business people, from the hill, or whatever, these people is 1% totally unbiased. These are experts to say, in, with our expertise, this, these are steps that are logical. So, information from everybody, have experts play around and give us back to us in a understandable 1-2-3 deal for $10,000, we should jump at it. All right? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell.
Yeah, one more.
Joel.
Joel Diaz, good evening. So I kind of agree with the last few speakers. I think this is a really smart idea. I mean, I think it's, it's borders on brilliance. These people are doing this for basically, basically pro bono, and we're getting this interdisciplinary expertise that's extremely valuable. I don't know what it would normally cost in the marketplace, but I'm sure it must be hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm just guessing. But I think it's very valuable. And I think, you know, the impetus for this economic development is to, is to look at ways to diversify our tax revenue. And, you know, I recognize that we do have some fiscal concerns. And, you know, the Baylands is a great possibility, but if it doesn't happen, we need something to fall back on. So I think it's prudent that we look at options. You know, we're not promising anything, agreeing to anything, we're just looking at options. The, you know what I would ask, in, in looking at this analysis, is kind of looking at the revenue that maybe we'd like to have, to, to make ourselves feel a little bit safer, you know, have, have the fiscal reserves that we maybe want to have. And not just to look at the benefit of city services that we'll receive from having additional revenue, but also, I'd like to look at identifying revenue that would also help the schools through, you know, property tax revenue. So not just looking at what the city needs, you know, maybe vis a vis sales tax revenue or something, but also looking at the schools. I know the schools are in a constant state of flux. I mean, we're in and out of crisis all the time. We need more revenue, we need more sustainability, as does the city. And I would ask that the schools be considered in this analysis. I think that, that quality city services and successful schools are not only nice amenities to have, but that they're critical components to the strength and vibrancy of our community. And I believe that as a society, it's our obligation to ensure the continued success of those city services and our schools. So I think this is a smart thing to do. And thank you so much for entertaining the idea and bringing it forward. So anyway, you know, I look forward to seeing some of the ideas. I never thought about what Michelle said with having this creek opened up, and I could just see it when she said it immediately, you know, I never thought about that. But it could be a fantastic opportunity for us to create, you know, parks. And I think the idea of the environmentalist is key. Got to have somebody in that regard. And so anyway, I look forward to it, and I encourage you to expedite it and to move forward with the, with the process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone who hasn't spoken? Gentlemen in the back?
My name is Dave Bostrom, and I just wanted to say that I'm definitely in favor of the TAP program. We're going to get a major economic benefit if we go through any of their ideas that work more feasibly. And personally, I'd like to see, I've lived here for almost 40 years, I would like to see a few more retail outlets, close to home, essentially. So anyway, I hope that the program goes through.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Okay, yes ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Linda Parker, and I wanted to just say that I'm for this as well. And I really like the idea of, I'm glad to know that there's 91% occupancy. That's, when I drive through Crocker Park, you see some for rents, or for lease signs. And so I thought that, you know, it was, it was much lower. So that's really good. But I think also would be, that would be nice, would be to have some incentives for the tenants, not only the landowners, but the, the tenants who come, who, who bring in the revenue for, for the landowners and the, and all that, to have those good incentives for them as well. And having the art, and having the parks, and all that would be a really nice thing. So I, I'm all for this. It sounds really good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we go back to Jamie?
Boy, I'm good. Yeah, I am really terrific. What a short time it took me to unify this group. You guys got a big bust out of this for me. Congratulations to me. Now, whatever you do, don't leave recreation out of it. And have a recreation specialist on that committee. And I think that Mr. Diaz, as I have heard him say in other things, especially at the last park and commission meeting, he gave the most cogent reason for doing this. And that is, that we don't know what's going to happen with the Baylands. But this is a resource we do have. So I see it. It's clear to me. But boy, oh boy. You guys really got on that horse, didn't you? Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. All right. Would you like to have a final word?
I want to thank you and the community for your consideration. We look forward to hearing from you and hopefully moving forward. We are in the midst of selecting a panel. Some of those people already fit some of the people you're looking for, but we need to add an environmentalist. But I think when you see the quality of the panel, you'll be very excited. Because we've already had some acceptances that are, you know, we, we haven't given them all the information yet, but we've already had some acceptances that I'm very pleased about.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Explaining what we can anticipate. And you'd like to have a final word too?
No, I have nothing more to add.
Nothing more to add. Okay, so we thank you very much, and we look forward to the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, Sean, for being here today.
Okay, we move on to Oral Communications. And I have two requests, one from Barbara Ebel.
Hi, I just want to take up your time with another issue tonight. First of all, I want to say that the city of Brisbane has done a wonderful job with one of its valuable resources, its families. And this, that's part of why we moved to this community. Not only is it beautiful, and well situated, but it's a great place to have kids. But, and so that you know this is coming from me, I want to share a little bit about my experience as a young mother. I came out of San Francisco, and I had my kid, I had my son, and I love him to death. But it was really hard because I was working for a while there. Not full time anymore, but I tried working full time for a while. And so I would get up around 6:30 in the morning, and get myself ready, and get him ready, probably even earlier than that, probably closer to six, to drop him off at childcare before I had to find parking at eight to be at my 8:30 job. And then I would get off work at five, and I'd get to childcare by 5:30. And I would get home for six, at six o'clock at dinner. Now, notice, at six o'clock, that's already time to eat, that's not time to cook. So we'd eat dinner, I'd have a little bit of time with my family, put him to bed, and then I'd cook the following day's meal, at which point I was ready to drop. And you notice I haven't said anything about dusting, vacuuming, laundry, shopping. Kids go through clothes like mad. And I tried to get my son into Silver Spot, but they would not take him because I was not available to work as a volunteer there. And it got really hairy for a while about where I was even going to have my son. And so I just wanted to say a few words tonight, from me personally, to let you know that one of the resources that I think is not getting the attention, or one of the groups in this town that I think is not maybe getting the attention that it needs, is working parents. Because like Linda Alameda, she only takes older kids. You know, and it is really hard. And I wanted to speak up tonight because as someone who came through that position not so long ago, I got to tell you, I had no energy to do anything for myself. I was completely at everybody else's mercy, honestly. And so, and I think that that situation still exists in town. I mean, there still isn't good support systems for working parents here. And that's a lot of people nowadays. A lot of people are, you know, have both part parents working. So I just wanted to ask the council to think about this, and think about what can be done. I'm not asking you to write checks at this point because there's a lot of competing things every day, competing for your attention, competing for the city funds. But I do think this is one small niche area that has been kind of overlooked. And I just wanted to say that. Okay? Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We will look into it, for sure. Okay, Jamie Dunn.
Now, this is why I left the peace of my home tonight. First of all, I totally agree with Barbara. I think it's a really difficult thing for working parents to find a way to take care of their young children, when Silver Spot, which is subsidized by this city, does not take children unless the mother, father can go in there and volunteer. I think we have to find a better way to handle that. I've heard this from other members of the community, and it is a grave concern. Now, I have a major concern, and it is this. We are losing our children. We are losing our children to drugs. We are losing our children to drugs on our street corners. And it is destroying families. And if there's anyone in this town who knows a drug dealer in this town, if there's any city official who knows where the drug dealers are, and knows who's here, and isn't doing something about it, the families of the children who are being damaged ought to come after you, and ought to come after you with the biggest lawsuit they can. I don't have my biggest worries about the children that can be taken by the hand by their parents, their family members. I don't have the biggest worries about the children who can be guided by the elbow, or given a little push. I worry about the kids who push their parents. I worry about the kids that are involved in drugs. I, I live here, I'm retired, I drive up and down the streets, I take my dogs for walks, I stop in the store, I see an awful lot. We have ghosts, 18, 19-year-old ghosts standing on corners. They're so drugged up. And they are using, there are adults in this town that are using our younger children as mules to sell their drugs. And I think they ought to be run out of town on a rail. And if we don't take action against it, if we lose one family, just one, from the destruction that's caused by the drugs that come out of this town, our own town, that is a tremendous sin. In anybody's religion, in anybody's parlance, it's a tremendous sin. I'm terrified. I don't want to be somebody standing in the street when the ambulance has come, and some reporter sticks a microphone in front of our faces and says, well, what do you think? Well, we never thought she'd do that. We never thought he'd do that. Yes, we do. If we keep our eyes open, we're going to see it. So I do care about the really young children. But you know, somebody who, I can tell you who it was, librarian, and I were having a conversation, and she was saying, well, you know, we know what the development of a young child's brain is, and this is why we do some of these programs. I totally agree with her. What happens when that kid doesn't have the support, when they get beyond your eyesight? They're not in your hand, and they're out there with these creatures that are killing them, and they're killing families. And let me tell you something, I'm not just talking off the cuff, I know who the people are. I know the families that are suffering. And I see the kids that are suffering. And I'm devastated, and I'm terrified. We should all be. We've got all sorts of things going on in this community, all sorts of things that are important to the community and the future of the community. But today, if we lose a kid today, if we have a family break up today, it is our fault. And we had better have a drug task force go after these people. It used to be little tittering jokes, oh, you know, he's dealing drugs from such and such a place, and, no, he deals drugs from that other place. And what are we talking about? How could they even be part of an okay thing in this town? This is very serious. If you have children, if you have grandchildren, if you care about this community, you got to be thinking about this a lot. This is critical, and I'm scared to death. And as a park and recreation commissioner, it is something on my mind all the time. Because we're putting money, we're doing everything we can to put money into these programs for these growing children. And I agree with that. The man alive, we've got to catch them, we've got to get to them, we've got to give them self-esteem, we've got to give them help, and we've got to give the parents support. And we're going to have to do it before that kid starts going down the wrong path. And they start with poor schoolwork, that's one of the beginnings. But you see them hanging out on the corner, it doesn't take till they're 21, till they're in the bar, forget that. There's a lot going on in this town, a lot that we had better pay close attention to. All these other things are important. I grant you that. And I applaud what you do. But this is breaking my heart. And I promise you, if anything happens in this town, I will go to the papers. I will stand on the corner and I'll say, I saw it, I warned them, I told them, and they knew. Don't you dare run for office unless that's in your heart. Don't you dare take a position in the city unless that's a critical point of how you feel. We raised a child, and you know, to a mother, a father, a grandparent, a child... a child is a child, is a child, when they're twenty-five years old, they're still your children, and you are gonna love them through that. But I will, I will make it public that this is known. Because there's tittering going on, people chatting, "Ah, so and so and so..." Get them the hell out of here, whatever it takes. And if my tires get slashed, I fully expect it. Somebody is not gonna like what I'm saying. But none of us, not one of us should sleep knowing this is happening. That's why I came tonight.
So, Ray...
Jamie, I think we all share your concern.
Yeah. I could without maybe compromising any investigations that are going on, Chief. Would you like to comment on that? Cause I know there are things that we do.
That's correct. It is a small community, and, and I just encourage people when they see things that are going on, it's to contact us, to provide the information anonymously. I do have an email address where people will email me with information. Our officers are out on working, walking the beat on visitation, doing all the bar checks, going on information that we're receiving, but again, yes, it is very confidential. But we do encourage residents. I mean, what residents see, even myself as a resident of Brisbane, driving in my own personal vehicle, is, we see one thing, and when a police car comes by, there's different, they're seeing a different thing. So we do encourage residents. What they see is important for them to call us and provide us that information, which gives us probable cause to go and contact individuals if they're seeing something. Then we have the probable cause, and it's not deemed as harassment. So we do encourage any information that's out there in regards to Jamie, what she's saying about families being destroyed. There are many county services available for families, for parents, for identifying, you know, their children if they're using drugs. But again, the parents many times are in denial, but we are here for them as well and to provide them services and referrals to be able to get those children assistance at an early age.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the other council members about...
Yeah, sure, of course. But I was, before then, I was just gonna wonder if it might be a useful future agenda item to... I know there's a lot of things going on, I know there are, you know, there are task forces working on these matters, and the police department is connected to that, and... But we haven't really had a full update on all that for a while. And I don't know, we'll check with the city manager and police chief as to whether that would, you know, make sense to do, to bring the community up to date as to all the things we're doing and all the services that are available, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Does that make sense?
I think we could provide, certainly provide an update on the services, on some of the things that are being worked on, it's a continuous, ongoing work that's being conducted. So I would not want to provide any real...
Oh, you don't wanna compromise anything, of course.
Absolutely, absolutely. But there are certainly services that are provided for families or for individuals within the community, yes.
Right, okay. Anybody else wanna comment? Terry?
Well, I'd like to say that, um, when I had more free time and I was out walking around and I did see things that were deemed inappropriate or appeared out of the ordinary or shady, I would certainly pick up the phone and call nine-one-one. I certainly wouldn't want to be harboring illegal activity, drug activity, and I don't think that any of our council people or city staff or police department would be condoning that kind of activity. So it is important to be involved, and neighborhood watch is one of the ways to do that. People who are out walking their dogs, who are out, out on the streets, need to report those kind of things. But I don't think that any of us are shirking responsibilities in respect to that. I certainly would not.
Yeah, being a parent of two teenagers, I have thirteen-year-old and sixteen-year-old, um, yeah, thank goodness that, that they're not involved with drugs. Um, as far as I know, that the, the kids that they interact with are not involved with drugs. Um, but I do know that, that a lot of children are. You know, I was a kid myself, and I remember there was a group of kids that, that partaked in, in, in drugs before going to school. Um, when I coached, there were children that, um, sometimes came to practice that were high. And, um, you know, I think, um, you know, as a council member, what, what can I do? And so, you know, having you come tonight, Jamie, and, you know, as you're talking, I'm thinking. And, you know, Clark and I are on the school two-by-two. Uh, we have a meeting that we're gonna schedule sometime this fall. And, uh, we'll, we'll put that on, on the agenda so that we can, we can talk about it with the school board, uh, members that are, um, on that two-by-two, so that we can get their feedback and so that we can collaborate on how the city and the school districts can work together to, um, you know, provide, uh, you know, better assistance to, to, to reach out to those children. And of course, you know, working with the chief to, to make sure that, um, you know, we're doing the best job that we can. Of course, you can't reach everybody, but like you said, if you could save one kid, you know, you could save one family, you know, you're, you're, you're dealing, you're, you know, you're doing as good a job as you can.
Is there anything, Clark?
Yeah, you know, Jamie, I, it's an epidemic proportion. You know, I go to, you know, and I'm not saying, uh, Brisbane's an epidemic proportion, but, you know, I've been in other communities where it is. And, I mean, it's devastating, the wide, wide use especially of methamphetamine and some of the more harder drugs that, uh, I mean, it's unbelievable what it's done to communities. You know, I have a business over in Daly City, and, uh, I've run into some gang members and people that, you know, wanna smoke pot or whatever outside of my store. And I don't let that happen. I just, you know, I'm very confrontational and stuff. Because by the time, when I call the police, by the time they get there, they're gone. So I have to chase them off. And sometimes that's not really a, a safe thing to do, but I have grandkids that run around there all the time, and, and they're being subjected to somebody else's stuff, so I don't appreciate it. And, uh, and it's the same way here in town, too. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, in one, one level, we're very lucky, you know, that we don't have the issues that some of the other cities have, but, you know, we also have to keep it contained. And that's why, you know, I asked the chief to comment on it, is I know that her and her officers, that, uh, they really are on top of things here. And, you know, you don't wanna compromise, like I said, any type of investigations and stuff that are going on, so... You know, I, I certainly understand where you're coming from and, and agree with you, so...
Yeah. I think we all do. Okay, any more oral communications? I assume Michelle, yours is the ones on the agenda, right?
However you want to take them.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna do it soon. Okay, so consent calendar.
We've approved of items A, B, and C.
It's our second?
Our second.
In favor, please say aye.
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 So we just approved, uh, minutes of September sixteenth.
Can I make, can I make a comment on it, though? I mean, I, I'm not changing the, just to make...
Any investment report?
No, no.
The which?
To item C.
Oh, item C, okay.
I just wanted to...
Brisbane Dance Workshop?
I just wanted to, um...
Holiday Arts and Crafts?
Remind the public that the fundraiser and Holiday Arts and Craft Fair is going to be held on December fourteenth at the Mission Blue Center.
Right, right.
Great of that.
Yeah. Nobody, um, seemed to, cause they're not expressing any concern about our approving it.
Right, right.
But it is good to make sure that people know about it, for sure, yeah, right. Okay, staff reports. City Mayor.
Um, first item is the annual yard waste cleanup program, and Maria's gonna make a short presentation on that.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, there's a lot of stuff here. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Um, just to update the community about the upcoming annual yard waste cleanup, that's coming up the weekend of November sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, just as a reminder, this is a time period when residents, when, um, the city helps residents with disposal of their green waste. Um, we're talking about their leaves, tree trimmings, and branches from their residences. Um, we're hoping that this will be a large event so that we can, um, clear, clear out the area to hopefully prevent any, um, plogging of our storm drains during the storm season. Um, residents are encouraged to take advantage of this free service that, um, collection service that's provided in cooperation with the South San Francisco scavengers. Um, similar to last year, what we'll be doing is having twenty dumpsters, um, placed throughout central Brisbane. Starting on Friday, November fifteenth, um, you'll see the dumpsters starting to be delivered throughout town. Um, as you can see on monitors, um, we will have a map of all the dumpsters, um, and we will provide a link to that map on our, um, on our website as well.
Great.
The dumpsters will be there throughout the weekend, and they will be picked up on Monday, November eighteenth, throughout the day. So just as a reminder, there are no staff, um, available during this weekend. Um, we'll just put all the dumpsters out so that people can use them. Also, as a reminder, we want to remind people that this is green waste only. Um, we're asking people just to put in this material, not anything else, no plastic bags, um, no other debris, because of what they do with this material, is try to compost it, and anything in addition to it will cause the whole load not to be recyclable. As another reminder also, in terms of trees, if you have trees on your property that are near power lines, we ask that you not trim them yourself, you should contact PG&E directly for that and for assistance regarding it. Um, if there, if there is a tree on your property that you're interested in cutting down or trimming, um, we also wanna remind people that they should request a, um, permit for either a full tree removal, or if it's a large portion, about fifty percent of removal, trimming of their tree, that they should request a permit ahead of time. They can contact me directly for that. Um, my direct number is four one five, five zero eight, two one one five, and there's information on the website as well in order to request that. Other than that, um, since, as a reminder, since this is just for green waste, sometimes people do ask about other types of disposal for single-family residents. I wanna remind them that as part of their service with South San Francisco scavengers, they are eligible for two free pickups every twelve months. That free pickup could be up to twelve additional bags of garbage, or it could be six bags of garbage and one large item such as a sofa or a mattress. All they need to do is contact scavengers directly to schedule that extra pickup, and when they schedule it, they'll pick it up on your normal garbage day. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Maria.
Yes.
So, um, you know, in the past, when we've done these, um, events, if people had, say, large branches, um, but they were unable to be able to put it into the, into the debris box, uh, the city had come, would come to their side and, and be able to put it on their truck and take it to the corp yard. Uh, and you mentioned that there won't be any city staff available that day, so that, that service is no longer available for this...
Correct. Similar to last year, we don't have the funds available for that, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, oh, I hear a question from, from Michelle, okay. On our yard waste.
Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident. Almost every year I've participated in, in this, cause I think it's a great thing. But last year I didn't, because it is a huge effort just to get the material from down in the yard up to the street, and that's all carried by hand. Well, once it's up to the street, I have no way to get it to a dumpster, I don't have a truck, I don't have, you know, the wherewithal to do that. Um, and so I didn't participate last year. Whereas every other year I've busted my back to, to do it, because I think it's important. And, and so I kind of am upset that we don't have the people who've come around and, and help. That was a huge, great service. And I imagine you didn't have as much participation last year, I don't know. The dumpsters in our neighborhood were filled by Friday afternoon, so there was not even an opportunity to add stuff. And so I'm kinda sad about that, especially when I see a lot of city staff time rearranging the garbage in those two dumpsters down by the corp yard. That's the free dumpsters when there's not a sign up, that everybody from everywhere dumps in it. And so I'm kind of upset, cause we use, like, staff time to do that, but we don't have staff time to help the community on a cleanup day like this. So, I don't know, there's, there's some trade-offs there that I'm not real happy about. So, I guess I won't be busting my you-know-what again this year, because there is no, um, you know, where they come by and can pick it up. That was a great service, it was great. But I have no truck to get it from my house to the nearest dumpster, which is at least a half a block away.
Okay, thank you. Um, just remind, can you, do you remind us of made that decision? And I assume it was a budgetary...
I can remind you, it was a budget.
Yeah, it was a budgetary matter, right?
Yeah, it, it was a budgetary matter the, the year before.
Uh-huh.
Um, when we, as you recall, we were taking all sorts of different things out of the budget. There was some concern last year, I think, that was voiced at the council meeting, um, when we went through last year's program about whether or not that was gonna work or not. And I think from the city staff's perspective, anyway, the day worked quite well. Um, and, um, was not a big, uh, uh, problem. I mean, we could certainly look, um, at, um, I mean, I think we're in a position now where we could look at potentially augmenting the budget to, um, add some staff time. Um, we also, in the past, and Maria, you can help me with this, but we had, um, extra bins that the city paid for, and we don't...
Correct.
We, we cut that out also.
Right.
But that did not seem to be a huge problem last year.
Right. Previously, um, what we've done is, um, we only had a few dumpsters out, and as they got filled, we would work with scavengers to pick them up, empty them out and return them. So we did have a little bit more, um, debris being removed when we did have the staff available, and we were able to, um, pay for scavengers to come out to do that for us as well. Um, last year, the only complaints that we received was that, um, the dumpster placements were an issue. There's a couple areas where, um, dumpsters that were there the year before weren't. Um, it was a little bit of reorganizing, so we're hoping that this year that we've captured those areas that were concerned last year. Um, but again, it, um, last year's, we didn't receive a lot of information. It's good to hear now that there are issues regarding it, and we could possibly see, maybe in the future date, if we'd like to take a look at that next year.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to remember now, I think the idea was that when, particularly, and their dumpsters in some places just get filled up very quickly because of the amount of foliage in that particular area.
Yep, in the hills.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and then the idea was that, you know, you'd take it to a dumpster someplace else that, that didn't have as much stuff, but that assumes that you have transportation, so there is that little problem.
Yeah, and we used to change them out, too.
Right.
But that was, you know, the, the extra dumper, dumpsters that the city paid for.
Right.
So, I mean, initially when we started the program in ninety-seven.
Right. So, in terms of cost, um, just, just wondering, um, you know, what is the most costly to the city? To replace the bins as they fill up, or to have somebody going around helping people who need to get from here to there, or what's the...
It's a little bit of a combination of both.
Yeah.
In previous years, we spent anywhere from six thousand to eight thousand dollars for both the staff time and the additional dumps. So it's really dependent on how many people we look at staffing from either our staff or we contract with another company to take care of the extra pickups for us. And then the actual loads themselves. The twenty dumpsters are actually covered within our current franchise agreement. Anything excess of that would be additional cost.
Okay.
And as a reminder, um, that the two-time pickup that I mentioned for single residents that can also be used for green waste, so if it's something that you can get up, just up to your, um, your front area where they normally pick up the garbage, you could arrange for that to be... So if it's something that you can get up just up to your front area where they normally pick up the garbage, you could arrange for that to be your pickup.
But that has to be bundled and.
Right.
Bundled, not bagged or it's not green waste.
Yeah, but if it's branches and things like that, those can just be tied up together, but yes, it would require some part of the collection because obviously you don't want leaves to be flying.
I think it's four feet, four feet in bundles, about like two feet or something like that and they would pick up six of them.
Correct.
For free, I think, was it two or three times a year?
Two times a year.
Two times a year.
And that does expire at the end of the year for your two times. Starts again in January.
Yeah. And so Clay, you said that we could augment this or do a supplemental appropriation or what?
Well, we would probably just bring it back at the, our mid-year budget, but if you, if you want to give me direction tonight that you'd like to have some level of staffing on that afternoon or that day, excuse me, I'll talk with the public works director and we'll see what we can do.
I found it very helpful in the past when we've had staff that was extremely helpful by coming around with their trucks and just making it disappear. But I understand that that's an expensive service to have that magic truck.
And that really was a purpose is, you know, this is, you know, like I said initially when we started this back 97, was to kind of reduce the foliage. So, I mean, if we can afford it, you know, I think maybe some level of having a.
I would be, I would be in favor of that at some level.
Yeah.
I'll work with the public works director and.
And I'll talk to scavengers about seeing if they can provide staffing during the weekend.
And then we need to let people know though.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Keep tuned to the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have the update from the Connect 13 conference and I think that's the city clerk.
Yes, I was lucky enough to go to a, as you said, a Connect 13 conference. It was hosted by Assembly Member Kevin Mullen and Supervisor Warren Slocum. And it was a day-long conference to talk about strengthening communities through social media. It was at YouTube headquarters in San Bruno and there were various lineup of speakers. There was Google, YouTube, Facebook, Draper University and Code for America, among others. And basically it's the first time that government leaders have ever gathered in San Mateo County to discuss how to communicate with our constituencies through social media. And so there was just a lot of great talks and interesting ideas about what other cities are doing. I think Brisbane's doing a pretty good job already, but I got ideas for looking into further ways of communicating. As we know, these days people are mainly walking around with, you know, smartphones and iPads and they're expecting instant service and instant information. So government's probably coming along more slowly than businesses and so these big businesses talking about how important it was for their businesses and how they expect these types of services from government, just it was an interesting conversation. So, anyways, I'm glad I went and got ideas, so we'll probably as staff keep looking at ways of improving our ways that we get information out and through which venues or what types of devices and information.
So what you think was the one big new idea that you think we can do?
Ah, I learned about a website that I want to put on our, on our front page and I can't think of the name of it, I don't have it with me. About, it's a directory of services available to all residents in San Mateo County on various health needs and, you know, child abuse and anything that you, any type of social service need. And this publication used to come out in a, every year or two they'd put out a publication, but as soon as it happened, it would be out of date. And now somebody has taken that and put it in electronic format and I didn't realize that. So beyond all the ideas I got, I thought of how many times people call me on the phone and ask for, what do I do about this or that? And I always go to that booklet, but to have it online right there and available for everybody to see, I just, I wanted to push that. So that was an interesting thing for me because I see it as a need that most people don't realize or a resource that people don't realize is out there, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions? Okay, so we move on to the update on the Bayland situation, the dust and elevation and grading permit situation, et cetera. So, city manager I assume is gonna take the lead there?
Yeah. I'm gonna speak a little bit to the air quality issue and the dust abatement issue and then John will talk about the status on the permits. Public Works Director couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna kind of fill in for him with regards to what's happening with the dust control measures and the air quality issues out there. Back in August, on August 29th, various city staff, members of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, representatives of the property and their consultants met here in City Hall to talk about development of a more robust program and accountability for the dust issue out on the site. The goal from the city's perspective is a zero emissions, basically no dust leaving the site. That is the standard that we are aiming for. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has some regulations that they work with, deals with equipment and operation of equipment and they have enforceability standards that they can work on with that. A number of takeaways came from that meeting. I'll just go through those quickly with you. Persons from both the Brisbane Recycling and from the Bayland Soil Processing were identified as the accountable persons for those two different businesses. Two additional 4,000 gallon water trucks are now to be on-site. Street sweepers to be on-site and scheduled every day to clean the access roadways. Rumble strips are now in place to clean the dirt from the truck tires and areas on the south end of the site have been closed to traffic. Additionally, a water tower is being moved in place and a plumber is working on making it operational. The other major kind of takeaway from that meeting was that a requirement on the part of the property owners to develop a, to submit to the air, an air and dust management plan for review was required. That was looked at by both the city and the Bay Area Air Quality District staff in October and a final plan was received on October 14th. Out of that plan, we've now come with a document that is, looks like this, which is basically the best management practices. It's basically a 10-step or 10 items that the property owner is gonna be inspected on on a weekly basis and our public works inspector is gonna be the person who's doing that. It has to do with the operation of the vehicles, wheel washers, the roads, the gravel pads, various, what the public works people like to call the SWIP, basically the water quality issues, the condition of the paved roads and the trucks and everything such as the speed of the vehicles on-site. Two inspections have taken place so far. Those inspections are being shared with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and there have been corrective actions given to the property owner with regards to those inspections. And as we report back to you on a bi-weekly basis with our council meetings, we'll kind of give you an update on both the inspections and also the compliance with regards to that. Unless you got any questions about that, and I'm hoping you don't because I'm not the expert on this. Randy had been here, he's got more of kind of a hands-on to it, but basically that's the program we got in place at the moment and John can speak to the status on the permits.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
This, you know, best control of dust practices.
Mm-hmm.
What authority are we using to enforce those?
That was a requirement that the, I believe that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District made of the property owner based on the meeting that we had back in October and the property owners have agreed to it. So I think that's our, basically our enforcement capacity. In terms of, you know, the terms of the law or the legal authority, you know, the idea ultimately is to adopt a lot of this stuff into whatever permits that we grant out there. We could potentially do it through some of the grading permits, although the grading permits are maybe not quite the best tool. It'd probably be best under the interim use permit that will be going through the planning commission later this year and we'll have all the, these standards as well as the inspection issues that we're dealing with out there.
In terms of the use permit and the processing of that, the interim use permit, the applicant did refile the updated operations plan, which is basically the plan that'll be the subject of the planning commission's review. There's a fundamental problem that they just rolled over the 25-foot height limit as it currently exists. And I think from experience here, we all realize that's an untenable and unacceptable sort of measurement of controlling future alterations to the site. So what the city's required, what we're requiring concurrent with the application is gonna be a grading permit that then establishes static fixed grades for that site over the life of the use permit, separate from the grading that will be required for development. So there'll be a grading permit that establishes the, you know, on a static basis, what are these elevations that are, that then an operation can occur on top of, but they're not gonna be mixing grading and site alteration with the operation of stockpiling and soil processing to kind of create a static surface. And then the operations will speak to what can happen on top of that surface. We've seen a schematic grading plan from the applicant in that regard. They need to refine it into an engineered acceptable grading permit application that we can take forward. At some point, there'd be a procedural question about whether it makes sense to carry the grading permit concurrent with the interim use or whether the grading permit just because of the significance of the issue of establishing what those grades are gonna be over the life of the permit. It might, we might be better off processing that independently. Once we see the final grading or their proposal of what the grading is gonna look like, we'll have to make that decision with the city manager and the subcommittee to determine a path forward.
Okay, questions?
I'm unsure what you're meaning by the engineered grading in conjunction to the permit for the site activity, not for the final use. Is that how you are wording that?
Yeah, I'm trying to make it clear there, there are, under the specific plan application that's subject to the environmental impact report, there's a grading plan that is proposed to allow, that would accommodate future development of the site. So that's already analyzed in the EIR. Any sort of action on the specific plan in proposal, one way or the other, some future approval would fix the grading required for the development. So that's sort of a discreet, separate item is what the site will be graded for to accommodate the future development. And as we know, that the site, to achieve the level of remediation and capping that's required, they're actually gonna have to peel back the material that's on that site, pretty much in its entirety, you know, down to, down to the, potentially the waste matrix layer. So anything that's out there now really isn't buildable. And, you know, the final resolution of peeling it back, recompacting it, making sure the proper cap is in place, that will be part and parcel to the future development, final development, whatever that is. In the interim, we're trying to get a handle on using the grading permit associated with the interim use permit to tie the grades of this site as, when, for its interim use as a stockpile operation in a soil processing facility. The problem as we see it in terms of implementing the permits to date is that then that the operation of stockpiling and soil processing has, there's no clear and fast line between grading and spreading material across the site versus, you know, what material's gonna be stockpiled and moved from here to here and sold and bought. And so we're trying to create a more of a distinction between the use, what happens on top of the fixed or on top of the grade and to actually establish what those grades should be. So to the extent where we create through this process certainty in terms of what the elevations will be in, during the life of this interim use activity of stockpiling. So that's one sort of decision point for the city. Then the second decision point is once you fix those grades, then you can decide what you're gonna allow to happen on those grades. On those, on those graded areas, okay, you can have a stockpile that's five feet tall or 10 feet tall or 20 feet tall. So we're not trying to chase this 25 feet from adjacent grade where adjacent grade keeps changing over time. So we want to create a fixed, static, future grade that this operation will have to abide by. That can be surveyed, it can be documented and we can track it over the life of this interim use permit. So trying to unwind the grading from the actual use in a way that's very clear and transparent for other people who sit in this chair and on this dais to make sense of over time.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thank you.
Cliff, okay.
So John, you know, my, my concern out there is not so much the height of the piles, but the dust that comes from the site. And, you know, just driving by it, you know, definitely the higher you go, to me it seems the more difficult it is than to deal with the dust, you know, like say tonight, it could be windy out there. We know that no one's watering it down. This is, you know, winds come through, picking up dust and taking it all over the bay. And so, you know, one of the things we talked about in one of the previous meetings was hydroseed. And so, you know, some of these piles seem to be in place for a long period of time and that hydroseeding, these piles that are for a long time, could alleviate significantly the amount of dust that would occur. Since we're doing all this watering, I don't know if the hydroseeding has taken place. I mean, it seems like something that should be done. We would see some of these piles already covered with plant material, but they are not. The only time that I ever see a green out there is when it's the rainy season and, you know, natural things are occurring that already exist in the soil. But once you move the soil, you know, then it kind of, I don't know, for whatever reason, even watering it doesn't bring in new plant material. So, yeah, kind of throwing that out there. Now there's a couple of things in there, so if you could address that type of mitigation.
Yeah, I think that's a good comment and probably as part of this site, what I call a grading plan or a site preparation sort of plan that shows how they're gonna use this site at what elevations. You know, at that point, they should reveal whether there are areas of the site that they're not planning on using for activity in the future and those areas would be very prime candidates to be buttoned up through hydroseed and left kind of an undisturbed state. So, I mean, that's kind of part and parcel to how they're gonna prepare the site and also maybe how they're gonna operate it. If you allow them maybe taller piles, would that mean they'll be covering less of the areas? That part of the trade-off, part of what that, you know, analysis in the interim use permit process will, will sort of play out, I think, in terms of, okay, what's the community value? Is it to try to reduce the amount of area that's disturbed? But allow the rest of the site to be higher or is it to be lower and allow more of it to be disturbed? I think those are all. I think those are all questions that the use permit process and that, and that site grading plan would, would, would reveal, and we can then condition, once those decisions are made, to make sure that sites, portions of the site that aren't being occupied or used are buttoned up and hydroseeded.
Yeah, you know, it'd be nice to flush those things out, because, you know, when you're driving on tunnel, you know, there's that backside that you know that is, is just not getting watered. I mean, it's just, it's just exposed. And so, you know, there could be a plan in place, yeah, to hydroseed that site, and then, and then make sure that it is watered, because, you know, it's, during the summer, you know, it's going to be dry, and from the wind, it's going to dry out the soil, too. And so unless it's maintained as kind of a, I don't know, kind of like a garden, in a way, you know, those plants will die, and then, then that, that service that they're providing will be short-lived. You know, we also have projects in the Bay Area that will, you know, could potentially have an effect with the processing of, of material at the site. And so, you know, and Clay, maybe, you know, you know a little bit more about that, in some of the, those potential projects. And so how they potentially can impact what goes on out there, and how we then provide the, I don't know, the mechanism to handle the influx in, of soil that might be coming in, or, you know, being removed, too. If you can kind of tell us how that, that will be part of the permit.
Well, I think, I mean, that kind of goes to the issue that John's been talking about in terms of what the, the grading permit will, will specify. I mean, obviously, what we're trying to get to is what the elevations are going to be in, over this period of time. So that, that will dictate, you know, what can come in, and, or basically what the input can happen out there.
Mm-hmm.
I do know that they're looking at some projects that could potentially have significant export, and, you know, that would probably be a good thing at this time.
Sure.
In the next year or two. But I know, I don't know that, you know, that's for sure, but certainly, I know, it's something I know that they're looking at.
Mm-hmm. And, or, one of the options are, are you, are they looking at moving soil from the east side of tunnel to the west side? Does that come up?
For the long term.
Long term, yeah. Yeah. You know, personally, myself, I would prefer that, that not be a short-term solution. Though, you know, we have talked about, you know, potential, you know, like, smaller version of Geneva, the Geneva Avenue extension, that's still probably very long-term, you know, even if it's, you know, just a couple of lanes. But of course, that would require significant amounts of, of soil to raise it up to a certain level. Perhaps that, you know, that could be a west side of tunnel storing of, of material. But, okay. Thank you.
I'm on the Subcommittee's, I'm, just, you know, I looked at some of the preliminary plans, and, you know, they talked about that, about the hydroseeding and abandoning or certain piles and stuff, but really, it's going to tie into our grading ordinance, and Terry, you and I have gone over that, and about the fines, and, and things like that, and that's going to fall within that category as far as our enforcement, so.
What kind of timeline are you thinking about, Clark? You know, or, you know, working with staff?
Timeline for what?
For that grading permit, you know, where we can then have these things in place, so...
But this, this is actually the, the, the part here, I think, that we're working on right now, is to get those measures in place before you process the permit. Is that correct?
I think they both can happen fairly quickly.
Yeah.
You know, we, Folk Works Director's been going back and forth with them on the, and Community Development Director with regards to the grading permit. So I, hopefully, we're going to have something for the Subcommittee to look at relatively quickly.
Okay.
And then I think we, you know, do need to, we, we're ready to bring forward the grading permit, or grading ordinance.
Right.
There's one issue. We want to talk with the Subcommittee. But the, that's ready to come forward to you. So I, hopefully, we can have both of those in place relatively soon.
Okay. That's, that's nice to hear.
Yeah.
But I have a question. If, I understand that we're working on the grading, grading ordinance, which is going to put the, the rules and regulations that anyone's going to have to abide by. I'm very disappointed that we've been waiting to enforce the, the dust and the height and everything until they want another permit, until it's convenient for them to want to make us happy. And, and that's really, has been upsetting to me, that we didn't look into this until they wanted to get something more from us. And, and now it doesn't seem that they're doing a very good job on really coming up to speed on, on getting the dust under control for the processes that they're doing now. But perhaps I'm wrong, but how are we going to issue them a grading permit for proposed heights when we haven't completed their application process, or what they're even going to get out there? It seems that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse if we're going to start grading for an unknown project that doesn't have approval.
Well, that's two, two different things we're talking about here. There's, projects totally separate. This is an interim use of the business of soil processing. And, you know, as I think as John referred to, all that soil that's there right now...
It's going to have to move.
They have to move it, yeah.
At some point or another, whether they move it and...
At some point, yeah.
Put it back, or move it, and...
And then it'll have to be engineered to, you know, compaction levels for, you know, construction and stuff, that's...
So the grading permit we're talking about issuing is just for their...
Soil's operation.
Their activity permit. It's really more of a site activity permit, interim use, and nothing to do with the final grade of any project.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I keep hearing those two words, those two phrases intertwined, and it doesn't make any sense to me why we would be granting them heights for a final product, for a project.
We, you know, we wouldn't be issuing them approval for any kind of final heights for anything. It's more a matter of, I mean, as we've had this conversation, this 25-foot floating height limit, right, that is not tied to any particular point in time. The point of part of this permitting is to fix an elevation, so then we can all go out there in the life of this permit, whether it's granted for three years or five years, or extended another year or two, whatever, that we can all understand that, okay, yes, this was the, the base, and this is the height limit for activities that occur on this base elevation. It's not that, well, we're going to push the dirt around and raise it three feet, and now we still comply with the height limit because of how we pushed the dirt around. So we're trying to create a base that we can then measure over time during the life just of this. That's the intent.
Yes. Try to eliminate loophole, you know?
Yeah, and I want to be clear, in terms of the dust control, we're not waiting for anything. I mean, that's in place right now.
Oh, I, I know, but I understand that we're working on enforcing the dust control measures and, and making them comply with BAA QMD and with our regulatory wishes. It's just that until they wanted something, like an extension of their permit, they really didn't want to discuss it, so.
And I, I think we're, we're dealing with it now because the community out there was, you know, getting on us to, to do something about it.
That, too. That, too.
And, you know, they've, we've been kind of kicking that permit thing down, down the road for a while, and now we're establishing, you know, what we think should be the proper elevation, and so, and, you know, having greater enforcement for dealing with...
So that's the important thing, is the enforcement.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we couldn't even decide what the height was, and that's, that's a difficult issue, too. I mean, there was a date that that permit was written, and at that portion, it describes the surrounding site, and that should be a legal description.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, as, as you know, it's, it's, we've been dealing with something that's kind of squishy, and we're trying to...
I understand.
...firm it up, so that we can, you know, so that, one, the folks that are working out there, they know what it's supposed to be, and that if they're not abiding by that, then we can use the proper, proper mechanisms and, to then find them. Right now, it's kind of like we, we can't, we don't, it's kind of, it's not really together. And, and that's what we're trying to do, is to make it so that we can then, you know, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do, and if they're not, be able to find them.
Okay. Michelle?
Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident, and I kind of even begin to express my disgust over this entire process. I don't really know now which is deeper, higher, the piles of dirt, or the piles of bullpucky that I've heard here over the last two years, which just get deeper and deeper. And I sound like Jamie, oh my God. You know, this morning, getting on the freeway, huge billows of dust were coming off of the southern end of the site, to the point where you couldn't even see hardly the traffic on 101. And no, it was not windy. It was about five minutes to eight. My first call was to B A A M Q D, Q whatever their name is, because I have them on speed dial, so I'm on the freeway trying to go voice control, call Bay Area, you know, and complained. And then my next call was to the Brisbane Police Department. My third call was to City Hall to leave a message for you, Clay, on the voicemail. And then I called each of you today, because I am disgusted and sick of this. You know, they have dust control measures in place, they're obviously not working. Since we met in August, and I brought this up, the piles have gotten at least 10 to 15 feet higher, certainly when you're driving down Tunnel Avenue. I think that this, although, you know, the, the permit that was issued many years ago, maybe wasn't written quite as tight as everyone would like, but you know what? It is the permit. And to me, it's really clear. Materials shall be stockpiled no higher than 25 feet above the surrounding grade. Okay? It describes the surrounding grade as BB Avenue, Tunnel Avenue, Lagoon Way, and the Bay Shore Freeway, owned by Sunquest Properties, et cetera. And then it says, "The property owners supervising engineers shall submit bimonthly reports to the Community Development Director on the compliance of this and other applicable conditions of approval." Show them to me. I, I don't think we've ever had any, at least not in the last 10 years. Item D, "Stockpiles of unprocessed material excluding the existing concrete pile," which I'm sure you can't even see, "shall not exceed 50,000 cubic yards. Stockpiles of processed material, including topsoil and sand, shall not exceed 100,000 cubic yards. All stockpiles shall be removed within 60 days of the cessation of use." There isn't a damn one of these that has been fulfilled on this entire thing. What is the deal? And now, I, I hear this, like, oh, well, we have to do the grading permit, and we interim use of stockpiling and grade, and it sure sounds like putting the cart before the horse, and, and basically, it is out of control. It is out of control. It is completely run amok. You can't decide, I, I mean, I think it's pretty clear where the 25 feet is from, even if some people think it's floating. I don't think it's squishy at all. It's written here in black and white. It just hasn't been enforced for the last 10 years, or 15 years, or however long. Maybe it was never properly enforced. But I think it's time you guys got some, and enforced it. And if that means shutting them down for a week, then shut them down for a week, because obviously fines don't mean anything. Throwing dust everywhere doesn't mean anything. The health hazard alone for all of that dust, where you don't really know where that dirt came from, 100,000 people driving up and down the Bay Shore every day, breathing that. It was disgusting this morning. It was disgusting. I'm practically on a first-name basis now with the inspectors at the Bay Area Quality Management, you know. I don't know what to do or what to say. But if this is the kind of enforcement that we're going to have for all of the future out there on the Baylands, then God help us, because we can't even get this one thing right. It's not squishy at all, Cliff. It's really clear in black and white, and we have ignored it. We have ignored it. We've decided it's squishy, because we don't want to enforce it, or we don't want to admit that we haven't enforced it. It's really awful. I mean, even the part about street, street sweeping, you know, between, between Beatty Avenue and the freeway on-ramp, I drive that every day. You should see my car, it's filthy, because every morning, as each truck goes out, all the dirt that's accumulated there on the roadway comes billowing up, regardless of whose trucks it is. It is disgusting. There is huge sedimentation now in that little cove where you get on it at, at Candlestick, and I actually had cause to drive down, you know, the Causeway. You don't usually drive that part of 101 from, from Sierra Point Park, from Sierra Point Marina into the city, but I did the other day. There was a whole new beachfront out there at low tide. Actually, it wasn't even low tide. That was never there before. And it's all siltation and dust from this site. It's part of the reason our marina is silting up so fast, is all this dirt in the water moving around, moving around, and we do nothing, except... I, I know we're trying to do something, but you know what? It's, it's too little, too late, not enough, and, and it just, it sounds like a bunch of bullshit to me. It really does. And, and, and while we sit here and dithered since August, the piles have gotten higher and higher. We're going to be living with those piles for a long time. And where are they going to move them all to? And how much more dust is going to be created when they move all these piles again? That's why it had a limit to begin with, 25 feet above the surrounding grade. It's now over 70 feet tall, by my, just looking at it. It's probably even taller than that. So where does this insanity stop? We're going to decide that the grade is going to be 50 feet above sea level, 100 feet above sea level, and then they could build 25 pile, high piles on top of that? Are we trying to build, you know, the next pyramid to the sun? I mean, really, I, I really tried to think of how you could interpret it as 25 feet to the surrounding grade, and then you just keep adding to the surrounding grade. It's ridiculous. I, I, I don't know what to say. I really don't. But you've got to do something, that's your job.
So I guess, I'm just curious, was the city involved at all in any kind of dust enforcement today?
I know we got a complaint. I'll have to check with you, or check and get back to you with regards to what enforcement we've been...
What happened, huh?
Did you get my message, George?
I, I did not.
Then what's the point of having a voicemail in the City Hall line?
Okay, I'll...
Okay, so anyway, you'll, you'll check into, to what happened with that complaint?
Yeah.
And, you know, where it's at? And I think, you know, we probably need to set some timelines on this, and so we're kind of clear about, okay, we're going to have, this is going to happen, we're going to have a Subcommittee meeting, and it's going to come to such, such council meeting and so forth, and so we get a little clearer on what the timelines are?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I have one more thing to say.
Oh. Okay.
I can't even tell you how awful it feels to come up here and be a bitch that has to say all this stuff and make this happen. It is awful. This is not how I want to be spending my time. It really isn't. And I hate raking you guys over the coals about this. I hate it. But something has to be done, because it's just not right. And I'm sorry you guys are feeling the heat, but you know what? You should be feeling the heat by now. The city staff should be feeling the heat by now. And I shouldn't have to be here on a Monday night bitching about this again, again. I spent two hours of my precious day today on this before I even came to this meeting, between the calls to each one of you, the city, the police department... between the calls to each one of you, the city, the police department, and the BBA M Q D whatever, and their call back to me, and preparing for tonight. And it just shouldn't be that way. And I don't wanna be the person to come up here and bitch at you. I wanna come up here and say, yeah, this is great, we're doing a great job. But right now on this, we are not doing a great job, and, and I don't like it.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
It's an important job.
Yeah, and you know, I just wanna comment, you know, you're right, we have not done a good job on this. And, you know, you brought it before our attention a long time ago, and, yeah, we should've been more serious about it. And, but I, I think that we are at that point where we are being serious. And, you know what? If we don't do it right by the end of the year, you know, then shame on us. 'Cause I think, I think, you know, I, again, you know, I can't, we can't go back in time, but we can, but we can do something about it now. And I think that, you know, we will establish what the grade should be, and it won't, it won't be any, you know, confusion about what it is. 'Cause I think, you know, I, I know we disagree on, on that part, but I, I think that we do have some confusion, and we need to, to make sure that we don't anymore, and that we put in place the proper steps to really mitigate the dust, because it is a problem.
Sounds like exactly what you said in August, but now it's November. Okay, let's move on and get it done.
Yeah, I hear ya. You're absolutely right.
Mayor Council members. Any county-wide reports, subcommittee reports?
Um, are we going, what, what is our timeline expectation of this next section? Or can we take a break?
Um, whenever you like, we only have one issue that probably requires a little conversation, and that's number one under D. You wanna do that first? 'Cause a lot of people have been waiting for that.
Oh, yeah, you know, um, I...
Or do you wanna take a break? Terry?
I just, you know, it's been since 6:30, so...
Yeah, you're right.
Let's take a five-minute break, then.
Is that okay?
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
Second, with a five-minute break. Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
One favor.
Bye.
You know, the airport guy was talking about the, you know, those pads and stuff. I actually had an opportunity, wasn't an opportunity, but it was, when I was in the military, I was in the Air Force, you know, and they had 707s, remember the 707s?